Fantastic. There you go, you're all set. Have a good meeting.
Yes. Good evening, everybody. It is December 20th. It is 6:30 in the evening and we are about to start the select board meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order and get into such the agenda. Thank you, Ms. Cantfield. All in favor?
Aye.
I am unanimous. Before each meeting, I'd like to read this statement. The Citrus Select Board is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcome and respected. We ask our committee members and all participants to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. That being said, are there any walk-ins this evening? In the back? No? No walk-ins this evening? The Republican Town Administrator?
Good evening. We have some new stuff from yesterday, so we'll start with the water update. Reservoirs at plus nine, last week we were plus two, tech tech we were minus plus eight, last week we were also plus two. The average daily demand was 1.130 early gallons a day. That was up on 1.048 the previous week. Rainfall the last seven days was 3.97 inches measured in the plan, which is why we have so filled our reservoirs. Having said that, we're watching right now for potential for another coastal storm Thursday through Friday. Rain and wind with the possibility of one to two inches of additional rain coming. Currently, the lowest forecast in state of the west of us, which could bring southeast winds to Citrus. If the low goes to the east, we could get a classic Norriston type of weather storm. We're gonna have astronomically high tides Thursday through Monday. Friday morning's high tide at 10:30 is 11:06, which is a high tide for us. We anticipate localized flooding in all the normal areas, Col Parkway, Central Ave, Pemarock, Everfoster Road. It's splash over, obviously, on Ocean Side Drive if that wind shifts to the northeast. That flooding will go from minor flooding to moderate flooding. So we'll be keeping an eye on that. The wind is forecasted right now to go up to almost 60 miles an hour. If we get gusts up to 60 miles an hour, we could see our waters in different parts of town. So we're still kind of tracking the storm at this point. We'll do an update to everybody tomorrow from our registry management team. Right now, it looks like it will be to the west of us, which should keep some of that flooding down. Please keep an eye on, keep your eyes closed, listen to us, and clean up any, if you have any storm chains outside, you have to clean those out. I know most people have taken in their stuff. But if you have stuff out, your odds are loose things, get those, and get them tied down, because it will be bussery. Again, we will have some updates tomorrow when we get to where it's flooding, possibly get that out to people. Unrelated to that storm, the DPW has established their salt sand pile for residents at the small parking lot across the region. Residents are welcome to go there and fill out buckets to get salt and sand used in their residential houses. Please, this is not for contractors, this is for homeowners owners, so if you need salt and sand, it is there, between a couple Jersey barriers, you can help yourself. Tomorrow, in advance of the storm, the emergency management team will be surveying the coast to document current conditions. We do this on an annual basis. So we will be flying drones from Dirt Cliff, working north to Idaho, data monitoring pictures. Those are very helpful to us, but FEMA says, no, the damage wasn't that stormy, etc., as before and after. So you will see those drones out tomorrow if you want to know what's going on with the drones. I think we'll see difference. As we talked at the last meeting, we had our meeting based on the consultancy report for the lighthouse. The team is moving ahead, we're replacing 1930's lantern room with a new lantern room of the same design. The store commission was actually fairly adamant that they wanted to stay with the current design of that lighthouse lantern room. After review, the engineers are also recommending that the first four feet of brick and concrete also be moved and redone. That has been done a couple times, it's in bad shape, so we'll be taking that down. We'll be building that up to the lantern room and putting the lantern room on. So the consultant will now prepare bid documents, preparation is going out to bid, and we will start having discussions on the old lantern room, what it might cost to save that, to redo it. If a decision is made to do that, what places in town might be a good place to put those. So those discussions will be ongoing. But we'll remind everybody, the Citrus Food Pantry is helping more residents than ever before. They are needing donations of food products that they can't get from the greater Boston Food Bank. They're seeking the following: beef stew, canned hams, spam, hash, canned fish of all types, cookies, hot cold healthy cereals, condiments, and salsa. Well, they should be dropping the food pantry during their business hours. There are also drop boxes at the Citrus Public Library, the Village Market, and Shaws on 3A. And also Citrus Houses on West, collect food for the food pantry. So it's the holiday season, people are in need, if you can help out, please make a donation to the food pantry. Hard to believe what would've walked, we'll open the walkers starting this Saturday for the winter season. While you enjoy walking green, we ask that you stay off the greens and keep your pets off the greens. Greens are very expensive to maintain, they're easily damaged, so we need you to stay off the greens while you're enjoying the outdoors at the golf course. We also ask that you pick up after your dogs, not leave the waste on the course. We will have barrels available for disposal at the end of the 18, out of nine in one on the other side, so people can dispose of their dog waste. The drift in is open, so after you finish your walk, if you get some snow, after you finish sledding, you can stop in for lunch or dinner. The last time, we asked that you patronize all local businesses this holiday season. They're doing a great job, they have plenty of things, you don't have to worry about the Amazon truck showing up at time with blocking the street, making the Amazon so you can get down to the harbor. Patronize your local businesses, well, Citrus area of local businesses this holiday season, that would be great. Col Parkway now, you'll see a conic trailer parked in the parking spaces for the harbor master. This is the start of the new dock project that will be ongoing this winter. The contractors, we move the electrical boxes in preparation for moving the old docks, the electrical boxes, we just do the conic trailer. Starting in mid-January, we'll fence off a portion of the parkway, similar to what we did when we did the island project. We'll post that plan before we start that, and we'll be directing traffic around it. But the walkway will be made open, traffic will still be able to flow. To Col Parkway, that project will be working all winter and it will be done prior to the start of the voting season. Thanks, Steve.
Yep. That'll be.
DPW has installed some snow fencing on all open bucket in the driftway to try to combat some drifting, snow and icing problems. If people know of problems in the other parts of town, please let them know, we're gonna experiment with this. We'll take a look and see if maybe that's a place for snow fencing. You will see the plow drivers driving around town with the plows on as they get ready, prepping for their winter routes, hopefully they won't have to go out at all. But if you do have a plot on a truck and you all need to pick up some work, we also look for private plow drivers and trucks, so please contact the DPW. I want to show everybody Merry Christmas, happy holidays, and that's what I have for tonight.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions for today?
Yep.
Great.
Yes. Quick question, the, I know earlier in the year, we got time on to look at that water offset program.
Now, we ask Kevin when he comes in, because they've been working on that. I am one who's doing it, I'm not sure if Steve Rafferty's, but we can ask Kevin when he comes in. We also have the rebate program, I sent the rebate form to the Water Resources Committee for the appliance rebates. I haven't got any comments back, so I'll see if I can comment back. The board must have looked forward to that, we can also.
Our first item this evening is a discussion vote on a donation to the Citrus Fire Department. Good, how are you doing?
Yeah, this was a former resident that stopped in, who actually, I met her at the door in the lobby. She presented us with a five hundred dollar check. This is from Louise Koch, she's the daughter of William Mary, who's a low intentioned firefighter. Started in the 50s, he worked in the 70s. And she's recently moved back to Citrus to make a donation to the fire. After that, I thanked her and we'll go to our, get to know what you use for, you know, supporting. Asked to use different dive equipment, other than the AD program, where the flood and the ADs going, we get.
Very generous. Any questions or comments? Yes. Okay, thank you, and you know, great, and it's gonna be put to good use. You know, like you said, all stuff you brought in the past. Thanks for coming in, Mark. We have a motion.
Sure, we've had the select board accept the donation of $500 to the Citrus Fire Department to support emergency equipment.
Thank you. Thank you for the comment, for the discussion. See none, all in favor?
Aye.
I am unanimous. Thanks, Mark, Merry Christmas, Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
All right. We did have an item next, but it's gonna be postponed until next week, and that was the discussion on fiber optic connection between our water and sewer treatment pipes. That will be next meeting. So, yeah.
Mr. Carey. Just remind everyone that the meeting is getting recorded. Everything, it's getting recorded. That's all.
Great. Beating his beat. Next topic is a discussion vote on a land donation by Toll Brothers. Are you, Bill, we're burning here, Bill, how are you?
Good job, so. Basically, on behalf of Toll Brothers, in the outset of their development in the cap, lots of land that the town often uses post-storm for reconstruction of the waterfront. They're often offering those to the town as a donation. I've already prepared the conservation mission, the 75th, they voted unanimously to accept these, and Tom Constance is very gracious in helping for these assets, Jim Crane. And that's what it is. Would accept fees, and we'll get this done completely before the end of the year.
Great. If you could just take one second and explain exactly what the land is, that would be great.
Sure. These are vacant lots of land that are right along the seawall. They're basically right in front of you standing on the seawall, the ocean, looking back at the uphill at the seaside in Citrus. These are all the lots of land along there. Half a dozen assessors blocks that are, I don't know what state that's, several hundred feet long wall. Probably most visibly is after storms, you'll see there's municipal equipment there helping to coordinate reconstruction of certain things, so that's what it is.
So it's on the water side?
It's on the water side, exactly.
Along the, along the reconstructed wall?
Mm-hmm.
Questions, Carey?
This is in addition to the prior gift of the marshland in between the sites, or is this an inclusive of that?
That's not inclusive of the marshland.
That's already been done?
No, the marshland is actually a subject to conservation, commission, or whatever, that's part of the entire, and part of the entire homeowners association.
Oh, are they receiving that? Thank you.
Carey?
But this land was never slated to be, have walking trails on it or anything, right?
No, no, this is right along in the town for, you know, passive use, and you can use it for whatever is appropriate for the town.
Thank you.
No.
No, we don't have this thing.
Great, so there's many lots that are listed, so they're just narrow. There's many numbers, so it's just on an open seawall area. This doesn't include the big open area that gets very wet or makes that gallon out?
No, that's, yeah, this is on the east side of the ocean side.
Any questions from the audience? Kevin, any questions?
No, that's great, that's what we talked about before here, it makes a great stadium here, it's gonna be seawall.
Okay, the motion? Please.
I would have the board approve the donation of land from Toll Brothers, we own that, and zero ocean drive more fully described as certain parcels of land situated in Citrus that are in county of land in common of Massachusetts, described as follows: being lots 321, 322, 323, 324, 325, 326, 327, 328, 329, 331, 332, 333, I know we all have to say it, 334, 335, 336. On plan, it can be set at B, filed with certificate of title number 1023, also identified as Citrus assessment parcels 34-1, 26-0, 34-1-28, -0, 34-1-28-A, 34-1-26-A, and 34-1-26-B for conservation purposes pursuant to general law 40, section 8C.
Second one, Mr. Goodrich, any further discussion, any further questions? So there's a restriction on this, it is conservation property. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? None? Unanimous, by David, thanks, Bill, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next topic for discussion votes is Citrus Harbor Company's dredging permit. $467, $245. Steve, loan, the harbor master's here.
How are you this evening? Thank you for seeing me. So, we put out an RFP, or personally received the, I applied for and received the grant. We see Port Economic Council, the amount of grants, $70,000 for comprehensive dredge permit. Town's share of that grant equals $74,000, totaling $441,000. Currently, it is $523,401 dollars available in funding for this project through other dredging.
Yeah. So that's in addition to the $441, what is the $520?
The $520, that is the total.
It includes the $441?
Correct. So, we put out an RFP and we sent it to six qualified consultants. We received three back. And we did, we reviewed them based on the technical approach, project staffing, and related experience. And everybody agreed that Woods Hole Group was the secure candidate for this project, as they're doing comprehensive dredge permits right now for the town of Falmouth, Edgar Town, Mashpee, and Sisburg. They've done these towns in the past as well. They have the staffing, they have the wherewithal, and they just seem to know how to get it done. So, GEI gave us a proposal, $267,909, and without the tier three testing, which Woods Hole Group didn't give us. We figured what their cost would be for the tier three testing. They came, they came out to $459,909, GZA. Again, didn't put in the tier three testing, 265, 208. And with the tier three testing, which is could be and probably will be required, it's out to $460,208. That's assuming $195,000 for the tier three testing. Woods Hole Group came in at $467,245, including the tier three testing. They were, by far, really did a better job putting it together in the RFP. Woods Hole Group is a lot of scientists, and dredging is all science. It's all biological testing, it's chemical testing. They gotta go to the dump sites and water samples deep down in the ocean and bring them up and, but. We're asking that you approve the waste permit.
One general question for you, but another. This is just permitting, it doesn't actually include the activity in dredging?
This is just, um, estimate on the cost of the actual dredging? It depends on the amount of dredge material. If it's 20,000 cubic yards, it would be between two, two and a half, two, two and a half million dollars. And we'd be seeking another grant for 50% of that from the state.
And that material will be used?
That material would go to the mass bay, get cut, bait disposal site. Because it's not really suitable for huge nourishment. It's a lot of stuff from organic.
Any questions for Stephen?
You asked a question, should we sell it to someone? Yeah, why, why nourishment?
Built up Col Parkway with this.
Hi, Stephen.
Hi.
Thank you. I'm curious, if it's a comprehensive permit, why would Woods Hole Group permitting line item be, you know, almost twice of the other two folks that submitted?
The tier three testing. There, there, it was, they actually.
That's included in the permitting line? I see that, and they have that pulled out in their separate line.
Because they're not sure whether the Army Corps is gonna require the tier three testing or not. So they're all about 260, between 265,000 and 270,000 dollars without tier three. And they're, with tier three, they're between 460,000 to 467,000 dollars with the tier three testing. Some had it, one company actually felt the need to put it in just so that we had a better understanding of what the potential costs are.
Okay. Do you guys see that line item? That's twice as much, okay.
What's, well, what's twice as much?
The permitting line. So Woods Hole is $87,000, whereas permitting for GZA is 46, and permitting for things.
Yeah, it's all, that's all, that's all over the book, right?
Yeah, that's all, I'm just curious why, because it's a big difference just on that line item.
Yeah, but the review one is more the other way, and the EIR, whatever that stands for, is.
Environmental impact report, I guess. It's so tall, part of the permits. It's just how they, how they broke it out.
But like Stephen said, the net is relatively close, you know, $5,000, $7,000 difference.
Yeah.
Right.
And they're, they've done a lot of these comprehensive dredge permits, and they're doing a lot of them. And I actually called a lot of towns and never satisfied with it.
Carey?
So just to be clear, the tier three testing is determined by the Army Corps?
Yeah.
So should they not require that? And what's your sense of, well, we certainly want a short call, basically?
Yeah, we want. I believe that when they did the, it was biological testing required for the Maritime Center when they did that.
Is that what the tier three is?
They needed these little hams, and they put them in buckets, and they sent them down to Maryland, see how long they did.
Okay.
Any other? The only other question I have, who was on the committee that wrote that?
So I was on it, Corey, Sean McCarthy, and Paul Scott. We all pretty much rated above the same, pretty, pretty close.
Sean, is he in the back, any comments? All right, any other questions? Motion?
Would the select board award the contract to the Citrus Harbor Company's dredging and disposal permit, CDP, to Woods Hole Group with a fast port not to exceed $467,245?
Second by Ms. Conley, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I am unanimous. Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you very much.
See you in a couple minutes, right?
See you in a few minutes. Stay Merry Christmas.
All right, the next item is a discussion vote on our water treatment plant. Phase two's design contract. Good evening. How are you? Can you take this lead back here?
Sean, Carey. So I brought with me Sean McCarthy and Steve Rafferty, the owner's private manager, to go on to the next phase for the design of the treatment plant. Which is all for good, isn't sure everybody's excited about. We gave you a lot of information, so we'll try to answer any questions that we have. So back on 7/1, 21, it was allocated a amount of $3.5 million for phase one and phase two for the RFP. What we came up with is we had the upper limits and the lower limits of the contract, depending on where things wound up through the RFP process. The total project design was estimated at that point to be $4,050,000. And that's where we are now, so we're looking to be completion of that money for full design permitting. There is an aspect, Woodward Current has brought up, $35,000 for additional public outreach. When we were prepping to get everything done and everything there to do to our meeting, that includes the website, as well as additional meetings. And then we also have a contract for, the board brought up, that'd like to see if we could do something to handle the round water that we have coming up in the future years. So what we came up with, working with Woodward Current in the DEP, which is very helpful, as well, Steve was involved in it, is to do a full-scale manganese contact or pilot. So what that means is the water will go through the treatment plant and then go through some filters that'll help take the manganese out. Some of the equipment will then be used out of this $600,000. 174 of it will be able to be reused at the plant. But that'll help us in the next three years to get this, to have some better quality water. And the way we're able to do it is as a pilot study with the DEP, which is, you know, handed to Steve and Woodward Current for coming up with that, because it's pretty tricky to be part of doing that. That's where we are, and I can, we can open it up for questions, see if we can answer and what we can pick out.
Before I open it up, can we just get a little bit of an overview of what, what they're actually going to do? And then the $3.5 million was a prior article A. That's, that was done before the 15th?
So originally, back on 7/1, we allocated $3.5 million for that. Woodward Current had given their price, their alternatives, piloting preliminary design of 1.375. The full design and permitting was between 2.2 and 2.7. Some of that had to do with where the location of the plant was, if it could be reused in a different location, or if it had to get out to appearance metals, because there'd be additional engineering permitting to run the new water lines and the supply lines out there. So we're still within budget, if that helps.
Well, the three, my question was, the $3.5 was not part of the $50 million?
No, it was $4 million that was allocated, and it was $279,000, I believe, time one with the OPF, yes.
All right, so if anyone understands, if they understand, okay.
I know, it's very confusing.
So let's.
We need a whiteboard.
Let's start over. So we got $3.5 million initially to start doing the design, designing work, and engineering work for the water.
Correct.
Okay. And what have we done with that so far? So.
Yeah, so, when, when, the first time you authorized up to 3.5, so the project's broken up, let's call it phase one, phase two, and phase three. Phase one is the, where does it go, what does it look like? How do you treat it, the whole pilot?
Right.
Okay? Phase two is design, phase three is actually construction. So initially, even though you guys said you, you know, you could spend up to three and a half, we only contracted with Woodward Current for what we call phase one. The evaluations, looking at the sites, developing concepts, developing some cost estimates, doing a lot of work on the pilot, okay? At the end of that whole exercise, we've now spent $1,804, okay? And that reflects a $24,000 credit back, because we did a pilot some stuff at the reservoir, which, you know, the paperwork's gotta come up. So now, where we're sitting here is, we've worked through that, we've negotiated, I've looked over the drawing counts, hours per drawings, permitting, you know, assumptions, everything else, we had a conversation with me, what, three, four weeks ago? Because they were like one of the last hurdles, like what will they require or not require? At the end of that, we're talking about Woodward Current is $2.648,000 from today to produce 250 drawings, specifications, to apply for six or seven different permits that are gonna be required for the project. And to have bid-ready documents, and have this job awarded on a scheduled ultimate site, yes, I have plenty. Overall schedule says, we've walked out here tonight, we expect the design to be, for all practical purposes, done early a year from now, January 23rd. But January, 2023, like January, February of 2024, there's a several month period of permit finalization and getting SRF review and sign off, so that we can go to bid and be under construction by the summer of 2024. And now that's that 2,648. Under the public outreach, when we went through town meeting, that special town meeting, a proposal from Woodwood and Current and they said, well, we think it's going to be 44,000 to 75,000. It was a little bit fuzzy as to what they were going to do with all those, they've broken up some stuff. We initially only authorized them, 40,000 dollar budget up on that. Things got going and people wanted this, people wanted that. They spent no more than their budget, their proposed budget of 75,000 dollars. What I said was, you didn't do a good correspondence about anything on this. I can't walk into the town and tell them to pay you any more than 75,000, your original cost, okay? So that's the 35,000 and we're asked to make them sort of whole in the public outreach. And then the full-scale manganese contact, you know, it's an interesting thing.
Okay, let's, let's stop there for a second, Steve, because I think we're going to have questions on that. So we spent 1.696 and that, that has gotten us to phase one?
Yeah, everything phase one, everything's done with the exception of going into this full-scale manganese contact, which would be in essence part of phase one.
Right, and the 35,000 dollars for the communication that was involved in phase one?
Right, right.
Okay, so that's going to be 75,000 dollars for the communication and the outreach?
Yes, an additional 35 from what they already were authorized.
They already paid for it.
They were already authorized for a quarter.
And that was for the eight meetings with the neighbors and the
The meetings with the neighbors, the meeting, the website, the correspondence, the back and forth preparations. Yeah, they, they had a breakdown and everything, so hopefully that was in your package, back and forth.
That seems high to me.
It wasn't in the package.
Um, but we, we'll get, I'll open that up for everybody else. And then when we, when we get that finally, we talk about the manganese, uh, contact or pilot. Anyone have any questions on the phase one for the, or?
It's like something asked me, so I just want to make sure I'm clear. So if we have a balance of 1,696,000, right, for phase one, right?
In the, no, no, sorry, it's, it's, it's in the, you have an article that was
Right, that we approved, so we have a balance of 1,696, right, in that article. Well, according to your math there, because you're saying that you've only incurred 1,804. I'm just trying to understand where the 3, 2, 8, 1 is coming from if we haven't spent 1.696. And why wouldn't that deduct from your remaining project work and where the 3, 2, 8, 1 down, or that amount? Although why are we, why are we seeking 3, why are we approving 3, 2, 8, 1?
That will pick up all the remaining open.
The original estimate that Woodwood and Current had put together is 1.35375 for the alternatives, piloting and preliminary design. Their full design and permitting was 2.2 to 2.7 million. They're on the upper end because of 2.7 million, I believe, was if you want to skirt Meadows. If you add those preliminary design and the 2.7, you come up to 4 million, 50,000 dollars. And that's where that loan comes in. So the additional design money is 550,000 dollars to balance that out.
I didn't follow, did you follow that?
So from the, from the original appropriation, you have the millions seven left.
Right.
Roughly, okay. This is the contract, the 3.2 million. The 1.6, and then you're into the 50 million with a balance on it. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I guess I'm just asking why we wouldn't apply the 1.6 balance to, or
We are, you, you're still, you're still approving a contract for the 3.2 million, but it's going to come up. The funding for it is out of two different budgets.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's, it's two different articles.
That's what I'm trying to, I'm trying to
It's out of the previous authorization, another 50 million going forward, so it's two different budgets.
Okay.
So the delta, it, it, is around 750,000 off of is the, is the manganese pilot, the additional public outreach? What is, I guess the number, what I'm trying to figure out, what's the number that's going to come out from the construction?
Out of 50 million dollars.
Right.
So it's the 1,384,000.
Yeah, a number that makes sense.
I can read a number.
So we got another, what, what is that number?
That's our short call.
1,384. But the answer comes.
And which six is attributed to the manganese contract pilot that wasn't anticipated?
So we spent 1.8 when we thought it was going to be 1.30. Is that?
We, we, we added some additional pilot because we, after we did two seasons, we realized we needed to do another third. And we did some design work on the 3A portion.
We also took some piloting from further on, so we're going to pilot the reservoir, which would have meant in phase one, three, Stephen.
Right, right.
So we would have taken the whole pilot, put it down, packed it up, sent it away, and had to bring it back, set it up later. What we did instead is we got water from the reservoir, put it in tanker trucks, and took it down to Old Oak and Bucket and piloted while we had it rather than have to do the whole thing twice. So that's coming out of phase three and it's moved up into phase one.
So phase three will be cheaper.
That's the credit that Steve was slacking about for 24,000.
Yeah, we just, we didn't get the full pilot that we wanted to get because of the justice.
Phase three will be cheaper because that won't be in.
The, the, and the, the real value is, at some point, it makes a lot of sense to have an intake in the reservoir rather than the Old Oak and Bucket. And the state kept asking the question, which is, you've done all this piloting for Old Oak and Bucket. What will happen when you go to the reservoir? Okay, so they, the, the money we spent really raised their confidence that at a future date, you're not, you're not going to have a treatment plant that won't treat the reservoir water. That's what we did, we proved that out. At a level good enough to not get complete checkoff on the pilot because I don't want to hear what the water quality will, will have to do at some point, but good enough to prove out what we're planning on doing to treat the water. Questions, you know, what do you have to add to the track, which has chemicals and ingredients? Pretty high level of assurance, you know, we don't have a wrong, overall wrong treatment process for reservoir.
So again, step back, phase one was budgeted at what number?
So we had, so we had the initial, the initial number, let me go.
What was the number?
1.375.
So, and I understand we did the extra testing for that and it came in at 1.8 over?
Correct, where there were three amendments. One was for some additional pilot. One was for doing the design of the utilities of Route 3A, so we can have a raw water pipe available from the table we needed. And the other one was for the, um, public outreach, okay? And those three numbers add up to what we've extended today with, you know, not doing any more work as, as we sit here of 1,804. That includes the 24,000 dollar credit, if you will, on the piloting part.
So of the 500,000 dollar overage, we got the three things that you just said. One of them is 40,000 dollars for the outreach and then the utility and the other pilots. That's a 40% over, about?
500,000 and 1.3, somewhere around there.
Yeah.
Is that nice?
Again, we, I would say piloting takes a lot of equipment and everything to do. So when we added the third season of piloting, we started off with a 780,000 dollar budget inside of the initial appropriation of piloting. We went from doing it twice to doing it three times. That's a couple hundred thousand dollars or more right there. We did design work on 3A, which was never in the original scope, actually is more to the detailed design side to keep the project accelerated schedule. That, that was another couple hundred thousand, then the 40,000 or so.
So is that design, we've had it done in phase three, right?
The design we've had been done in phase two, we, we
And by step.
And we, we've actually created two different construction contracts at this point for the job. One to get pipelines into Route 3A. So they're all set and done and not interfering with building the treatment plant plus having a pipe there that we can use to get water from Old Oak Bucket to test the plant and run it.
Right, so is the 200,000 dollars for that extra utility work going to reduce phase two?
Uh, no, that's already, that's already been contracted.
I know, but it, it wasn't phase two before, right? Like we shouldn't be having as an overage for one, right?
So, I mean, although you have to be initial day when we looked at this project, started looking at it, talked about the pilot. At that point, the concept was going to be one construction contract. Okay? But as we got into looking at alternatives and looking at schedules and everything, realizing that to the extent we can knock six or eight months off of the overall construction schedule, at the end of the day, it saves the thousands of money. And so therefore, we decided to create two construction contracts, which costs a little bit of money to do, but probably the end of the day saves a substantial, you know, whatever a year's worth of construction inflation is these days, so. Plus, the state has been making noise about doing work in Route 3A here, 3A here for a while. If they ever jumped into the work they've been talking about, which you and I talked about the whole way here, there's a five-year moratorium for digging it up and putting anything in the road, so. We made a decision that let's get in there first and get this done.
So the answer is yes, no. If it's, if it's in what we've already spent, if it wasn't there, then phase two would be more. Because it will show up in phase two.
Right. So does anyone need an explanation of the two construction contracts? You guys?
I just have a question, the, the, the manganese contractor contact.
I put it up there.
Oh.
First one, we get to that. All right, so explain to me the two contracts. So we did the two contracts. Should you say this is a, a year's worth of stuff?
Right.
Explain what that is in layman's terms.
So if we had one contract, all we would do is we would design the pipeline, we would design the treatment and nothing would get started on construction until, you know, summer of 2024, okay? The contractor who's doing, who would get that contract has got to do all that work. At some point, the lean's water, there's nutrient supply in order to test things and do things. So under, under construction schedule, what, how things would progress on the site and how things would happen, we found that we, we had, instead of doing like a 24 or 30-month construction duration, we were looking at a 36 or 40-month construction duration. If we didn't have the pipelines, we needed to leave five of a lot of communication back down to this pump station.
Steve, can I step in?
I don't want to, probably too much.
No, no, you, you are, you're getting a lot of information, a lot of it's great information, but I don't think everybody's understanding it. So as the design phases is two processes. One is to run the utilities where the old plant is up to the new site, it's Scurry Meadows. There is a significant lead time in pipe as well as permitting, Mass Iwo. As part of this first contract, we pushed that along so that we're going up to bid, hopefully in February, to do that work. So when we do that work, we will get that pipe up. Right now, we know there can be a lead time of up to 24 months to a year for getting pipe. So we wanted to get that out so that that job could support the construction of the, of the plant itself. So we pushed really hard with Steve and Woodwood and Current to get that done so that we'll be set up to continue on. Otherwise, if you gave that contract out as whole to the utilities and the main plant could have delayed us up to a year. And we didn't want to risk delaying, we tried to move as quick as we could to get this up.
I understand that, but again, that was a phase two cost. So I think, I'm looking at it saying, we spent a heck of a lot of phase four on phase one than we thought it was going to cost. But if you're telling me that chunks of that are really, were previous, were originally in phase two, then, um,
Then you're feeling bad.
Feeling bad.
So my understanding, and Steve can correct me if this is my understanding of it. The original design phase was 1.375. We have spent additional, but the upper limit of the full design was 2.7. And that gave us a total of 4 million, 50,000 dollars for the complete design of the pipes and the plant. That's where we are now. So some of that money from the permitting in phase one has slipped into phase two to get this to where we are now. Does that make sense? We're still, the original budget that we had with Woodwood and Current when we opened up the RFPs was 4 million, 50,000 dollars on the upper limit. That's where we are now and that's what we're asking for.
Right, but what, what, what is that? Is that phase one and phase two?
Phase one, phase two. So that's full design of the plant and full design of utilities as well as all the permitting involved.
Okay, and that gets us to the bill.
That gets us to the, that gets to the bids. Everything but the next phase, phase three, is actually for 45,000 dollars, which is bidding award. But we are a year away from that, we didn't need to, to do that at this time. But this is just to get the entire design out on the street and be ready to go. One of the things, there are going to be additional costs involved in this. We're going to have construction administration, we're going to have to have full-time staff when we're building a facility like this. It could be a third party, it could be someone from Woodwood and Current, but there will be inspectors out there every day during the construction process of the project. We also have the commissioning and warranting, so that's, those are all different costs. We can use construction administration, it's estimated to be 2.4 to 2.8 million dollars to build the side of the project. Woodwood and Current has given us numbers, but at that time, we'll shop those numbers when that, when that comes out. And we could use a, with the third party and we'll see how that works.
But that was in the original projection, right?
No.
You did a project and you didn't put a 2.5 million dollar cost in it? Yeah.
The estimate was in it, but it wasn't in the original bid, it wasn't in the first contract because that's, that's the third thing.
It's in that big number that we put out.
Yes, yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah. But I'm, I'm just making everybody aware, this, this isn't the only cost we will have with engineering and administration. There's, there's additional costs to go through and that was brought up on the original proposal when we first came in.
So say the one number now, I'll, let's, maybe I'll start. To, for, to complete phase one and phase two, the goal was 4.1?
4 million, 50,000 dollars.
4 million, 50,000 dollars.
You agree with that, Stephen? It's your numbers, your negotiation, I'm just making sure we're, we're there.
Yes. I'm having numbers in my head, I'm looking at it like she, I'm having
And we, so we've spent 1.8 so far.
Correct.
And that's, so the rest of phase two should be 2.2.
That sounds correct.
Karen?
No.
No, not this one.
Whatever.
You can go ahead. Look at the manganese.
So, just two questions, two fellow questions. So the 1.3, that's, so the three, 3.5 was approved for phase one and for phase two. We added some stuff, which we'll, we'll cover. But the, basically the overage for three, the original is 1.3 million that we're going to dip into the 50 million.
So, so the original that was allocated at the last, I have to report you, was 3.5 million dollars.
Phase one and a phase two.
No, phase one and two has never cost 4 million.
No, no, the original, it was supposed to be phase one and two, 3.5.
Part of that, and then we only gave Woodwood and Current the contract for phase one
Correct.
in part of to do the utility work to keep everything from the one.
Right, so they've done the phase one, we had 3.5, we did the phase one, cost, put it cost, now we're going to phase two plus some things.
Phase two, which is 1 million, 50,000 dollars.
Is another 1.3, is, gives us a deficit from the original 3.5, but 1.3.
Yes.
You have any time?
No.
Okay.
You're, you're correct, yeah.
So, so the 1.8 that you spent and the projected 2.6 gets you to the 4.4. Deduct from that the 3.5 authorized, it's the short call.
What's 4.4?
I rounded.
What's 4.4?
What it's going to cost to finish phase two. Total of phase one and phase two.
Well, they just said phase one and phase two was 4 million.
4 million, 50,000 dollars.
Yeah, I rounded.
Well, that's 2.2 more, not 3.5 more.
No, 3.5 was
3.5 is the original.
So it's 2.2 more, you have two phase two. Right?
From the 1.8, yes, you're going one way and she's going the other.
Yeah, okay.
Y'all look at 3.5 authorization, y'all look at what's spent today. So we're all, I think we're on the same page.
The 3.5 we've recovered from phase one. The 3.5 we've recovered from phase one and two.
Correct.
Correct, and that's what, that's the delta.
It was a phase.
So the other question, so you said that the credit though, it's not, we're not going to see that credit on the, on the 50 million because it's already incorporated in the next number. You know, Tony's question about, does that offset this cost, it's already offsetting in here. We're not going to see down the road another less, less charge because it's been done.
Correct.
Um, and I guess the last, yeah, big question is, oh, on the last question I had. So the future phases that you've broken out here, Kevin, those numbers were in the 50 million dollar.
They were in the original RFP and the original estimate.
Okay, okay.
And that's.
They're not on top of the.
I'm just making sure right away where it is.
Yeah, that's in the normal.
Those are the normal costs.
I, I, I go against you, but the 50 million dollar budget included a certain amount of money for designs. And you knew that we were going to need more money than the original previous article. And it included it allows for our engineering inspection services doing construction, and then includes construction cost and continued.
There's, got it.
Well, do you have good more? Right?
So the manganese question.
Yes.
So, that's almost $70,000, but that was not originally.
That was not originally planned, so what we hoped to do, or what our plan was, is we were going to take, there's $174,000, it's my understanding, we, we used, used this thing, the plan, new for that section out of that 50 million. And what we were hoping to do is try to work it out, we take that money out of Nancy's consignment. Like, budget, and we had some loans that were no longer going to be done, and try to take care of it that way.
Yes.
Only, on the pilot contract, and only those things that can be reused in the new plant will be charged to the new plant. The things that cannot be reused will be charged to the existing, or the upcoming operating budget. Which, with the money we put up, uh, plus as Kevin said, they have some debt coming off, so there's sufficient money to cover that in this budget.
But it's all covered under the 50 million dollar.
No, not that.
So it's only.
Just the 174,000.
Just that part that we're going to take from there and put in the new plant.
All right.
And this will make sure that the manganese contractor, contractor, whatever the word is.
The manganese thing.
That we piloted is going to work at that much higher volume that we'll be sending to them. So it's double, so we're probably, we'll check on, on making sure that works. And then we take all the stuff, move it out the street.
But it, it's, it's good news for the average person who's getting brown water, right?
That, that brown water that we were sending through the plant last year that we had no way to treat for.
Right.
The plans that we will have way to treat for that this time.
So people don't need to wait another three or four years whenever it turns out to be, to have some alleviation of that problem.
That is the plan.
Yeah, we, 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 we step back, you know? I mean, the question came up, we were to some extent, is there anything we could do? You know, this injury, what, what could we possibly do? And look at the fact that we are applying the technology, it's sort of a new technology, like, that you don't have green sand filters, but this is a different configuration. Uh, we saw an opportunity to constructively permit, uh, and prove out that it does work and be able to provide a better quality of water on an interim basis. We're not making something that's going to last 10 years.
Well, that would be my next question.
No, but we've looked hard at, you know, you already have some equipment there, we've, we've got piping plans, we've got some contract prices for moving some pipe in the ground around. Um, the biggest issue right now is we, there's some pretty sensitive equipment that is used to measure manganese. It's got a bit of a lead time on it, but it's going to go to the finished water plant, and it's expensive stuff. It's at least like 30, 40,000 dollar analyzers, okay? Um, and so we're buying some of those for this pilot. So we're not just taking samples inside the lab, we're going to continuously monitor the manganese levels and adjust things as we're going through it. And all of that stuff, plus all of the media we're going to use, can go to the new plant. So we're, we're going to have close to a total of 180,000 dollars or something at the end of the day of equipment and everything that will move to the plant, we'll have multiple manganese contractors.
The 174, I'll call from my memory, so I could be off on a dip.
Okay, yeah, well, I, I, so the follow-up question is, this, this isn't, unfortunately, a cheaper version of building a new 50 million dollar plant, is it? I don't want people out there to think, and/or that when you're talking about sending things off to the lab for analyzation as to manganese levels, all people do is pour the water in their bathtub and they see it's brown and.
So, it's, it's, it's a little, it's a little better than, it's a little bit effective for the rust on your car and your traction sticker. Uh, but, you know, maybe the.
The car is still.
The D E P wouldn't allow us to do that, and say, that's us, that's us all.
Okay.
The other, um, that's, that's one of the big things. The other thing I just want to bring up, we still have manganese on the pipes, we'll have to continue flushing. Just because we get this up, it's not automatically going to go away, it's still material out of the pipes, and we're going to have to address. It'd be the best we can address.
Which we are. On a ongoing basis.
Which we are on a ongoing basis, so I'm just, I'm, I'm bringing that up to people because it's not the fantasy of the case scenario.
Well, I personally think to pretty short money, it's kind of a good solution on a number of levels. So I thank you for, you know, thinking of it, and, because I, I think that we're all concerned about having to tell people, well, you don't have to wait for three years and still have brown water for the next three years, so hopefully, that's it.
Right, but it doesn't, it doesn't deal with the stuff that comes out of the wells, it's just what we treat. So, if we don't have a, we can say it's not going to well, but it's, we're still kind of.
All right, well, okay, your next question. Do all the wells go through the water treatment plant? I thought not.
No, no.
No.
So, are there people with brown water that are getting?
Your high manganese, your high efficiency wells are 17A and 118B, both of those have re-sinked.
And, they, they have green sand. So, unless.
17A well, we just finished.
Right now, unless you're getting your water from the, uh, water treatment plant, you don't have a brown water.
No, you have a brown water.
Right, some of them are below detect, they're not coming out by manganese.
I mean, I don't, I don't want to.
I don't want to show.
We don't believe that there's not going to be any manganese, there's still manganese going into the system.
Yeah, it's in the system.
Right.
It's existing in the system, it's for a while, it'll take a while.
But we've said that the majority of it is coming from the treatment.
Right, yeah, that's my impression.
So that will be, this will be a.
Manganese is actually occurring in the water, at different times of the year, you can get different levels of manganese, so that's always a potential.
But when we're talking about brown water, we're talking about water that has a lot of manganese in it.
Correct.
I may have no brown water at my house, but there's still be, may be manganese in the water. So it's not detectable to your average person.
Exactly.
All right, so, I still think it's a good solution for the brown water that has been plaguing a lot of people.
Yep, me too, we're, we're pretty excited about it.
Okay, thank you, that's it.
Um, did I remember anything, Nancy, or do you want to correct me on anything?
You're fine, I'm fine.
So, what is this, like, what is, what is this filter that's going to be at the old water treatment plant? Is it a, a building, is it a box, is it a?
Yeah, so, um, for the, um, 17B well, uh, no, like, so, there was a period of time where you did some manganese treatment through conventional green sand filter, okay? I want to explain how the water moved around. It wasn't, it wasn't the finished water coming out of the plant that went through the mag, the, the green sand filter.
Can I, can I try it?
Yeah, I'm just going to say, the, the equipment's stiff in there. So it's stiff, so we're going to actually open these vessels up and remove things on the inside of them. Put a different type of media inside, take the finished water through that media and monitor how fast that media gets consumed, for lack of a better word. Like, how often you have to change your carbon filter, your sink is a function. We think we know from the pilot plant, but we'd like to get a much better handle on that before we build a bin one. Um, and know, like, whether it's five times a year or six times a year, you've got to go clean it. Right now, we think it's four times a year, it might be five or six or seven, but we want to get a much better handle on it. So we're going to take apart this equipment, repump everything in there, and put it all back together.
So in the stone building, um, I, I know most of you have been out there, we, when we bypassed the water, when we shut down the treatment plant, we did repairs, emergency repairs a couple of years ago, we shuttled the water over from 17, and we ran it through the egg-shaped things that were in that stone building. We're going to take those apart, we allocate those, we save those in case we ever need them again. Now we're actually going to need them again, which is good because they're out of the find. Noel's been waiting a year and a half to get some. And what we're going to do is we configure them so that they can handle the manganese coming out of the plant at a higher level and reuse that, so we, there was a cost statement involved.
Yes, so the water's going to go through the plant, go through the charcoal filter, then go off the end through that egg.
Through the eggs, and, and they'll throw it to the distribution. I'm sorry, that was confused.
Simple. Yeah. So the one thing, I just want to make sure that we're not even, we're thinking that there's not going to be any more brown water. It's going to be better, this is going to help it, but there's still always going to be some brown water that's already in the system, and these filtration systems aren't going to catch up.
Correct, will be an improvement. The nutrient plant will get you to a point where you have reliability, redundancy, and clean water.
Right, the double is not on, right?
Good.
No, this is good for the.
You get it, you get it on base, you get it on base.
Right.
We won't be sending brown water in the system.
Any questions on the manganese thing?
Yeah.
Is the water in the reservoir worse than the water in Old Oak and Bucket, or is it simply different?
Yes and yes.
Yes and yes, the water is different. The water in Old Oak and Bucket is probably the worst water, and you said, because you have taps on in reservoir, not Old Oak and Bucket. Different things have been contributed in different ponds on the way down, there's different depths, you know? How they fill and draw, and oxygen and turn over and everything else, you know? The, the strong belief is that the reservoir water is better than Old Oak and Bucket. But back to the overall schedule, it would take, it's going to take years to permit a new intake.
At the reservoir?
At the reservoir, it's, you, you would, five years, you'd still be in the permit, you wouldn't be delivering the plant. So we made the decision that we'd use the existing intake and treat that water because we could get it put in mine years earlier.
And then in the end, you'll have two intakes, so if you have to close one down for maintenance repairs, you're still getting water from some of it, so.
Any other questions? So, just go over the math of what you're actually asking for tonight. You're asking for 3.281, which is going to get us through phase two.
So, I'll, I'll take a shot this evening, you can correct me if I'm wrong. So what we would look for is the total design project would be the $4,050,000 for phase one and phase two. Woodward and Karen, um, 35,000 for public outreach, and the 598,000 for the full-scale manganese on factor pilot.
And ask any people about 3.2?
3.281, so there's a, the executive action request to get some numbers on. And at the bottom of that is a suggestive motion. The suggestive motion, the suggestion motion is the sum of the full design permitting at 2.648, public outreach at 35, the manganese contact and pilot at 598, so we're looking for you folks to, um, approve so we can go forward is to allow the contracts to be amended, the total sum not to exceed 3,00281.
You might have a question? I don't know.
Well, when, when, yeah, the, 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 the.
Nice.
Yeah.
2.648 plus 1.804 equals 4.452. And you said it was 4,050,000.
I said the total design contract was the 4,050,000 plus the 597,000 and plus the 35,000 dollars.
So, I, I didn't include that in. I didn't have those two. I took the 2.648 plus the 1.804, it equals 4.452. And that includes utilities and extra pilots, which were supposed to be in phase two, not phase one, and $40,000 for outreach. Am I, am I the only one that doesn't get the math? You said 4,052, 4,050 gets us through phase two.
But the design, yes.
And if I add 1.804 and 2.648.
Now you subtract that.
Understand, that what we spent, we've spent 1.804, and you want us to spend 2.648 in addition? And that equals 4.452.
Personally, I, I, I couldn't, yeah. So, I'm going to try, I'm going to talk to phase one and phase two, two.
I had a delta of the design contract, 550,000 dollars, the public outreach for the 35,000 dollars, and then the con, the contact of pilots with manganese at 598.
What was the first one?
It was an additional 550,000 dollars.
That's what we were saying.
Right, and that was, you said that was built in phase one, but what was really phase two, quote?
That was for the complete design of the plant and everything, the 4,050,000 dollars, which is the upper estimate.
Right.
So that delta is 550.
Delta from one.
From the total of the, what's already been allocated, you already allocated 3.5 for the.
Yeah, I don't care about the three more dollars.
Okay.
So I'm just talking about the, what we're spending. We're spending 1.804, we've spent it already, some is phase one, some is phase two.
Yeah.
And you're asking for 2.648 to get us completely through phase two. Don't include the 35, don't include the fucking manganese thing, that gets us through phase two.
No. I'm, I'm going to try this though, okay?
Wait, wait, no, no. Don't say anything. Sean did the math, I didn't bring my calculator. While I'm talking, so I'm sorry.
That's what I've been using too. 2.648 is the new final.
But, but that doesn't include public outreach and manganese.
He knows, he knows, no, he knows, he knows.
Okay, you say it.
This was the, the latest.
The most up-to-date, right?
No, there's just 400 grand, and I don't know what is in here. No, not including that, because that's for the magnesiums, that's not even a stuff. And so, we're asking to amend the contract to 3.28. We still have 1.696. So they, they. Let's, let's just talk about what we spent and what you're asking to spend to get to end of phase two.
But, we've spent 1,804.
Yeah, and what else are you going to spend?
We're asking, you're going to authorize 3,281 to get to the end of.
You're asking for 2.648.
1.804, phase one, that's what we spent, right?
Yeah.
You're asking for another 2.6.
Right.
Tony's point is 1.8 plus 2.6 is 4.4, not 4.050.
Right.
And you back out 75 because we didn't.
No, the 40's in there and the 35's not included.
So we backed out 40, we spent 40 on public outreach, so we didn't have any original budget, right? So you're still, let's go to 350.
Which, what you brought up was, why was it in there?
So.
Where's the answer to 350, is that question?
Right.
Why is it 350 more than 4.05, well, 300 actually to 300?
I tell you, we don't have to. I mean, I think we all like the track of the project, but we need that answer at some point in time, like next year.
4.34 came from the Texas reservoir, piloting, public.
Yeah, but you said that wasn't phase one, that was phase two. You said that was quoted in phase two. So it would be inclusive in this.
Right, there's that.
But they were in the original.
But they were in the original.
So do we, do we take the seventy five thousand dollars while they're looking at for outreaches? On apartment. Reasonable?
That was thirty five, where are you getting seventy five?
There was forty in the first one, we were asking for another thirty five.
Oh, thirty five, oh, yeah. Yeah.
For eight meetings and hosting a website and.
Well, they already spent forty, right?
So spend seventy five, they're looking for another thirty five.
Spend seventy five.
So the total will be about a hundred thousand?
Seventy five, seventy five.
Are you debating the need or are you debating the price?
The price, definitely the need. Oh, that's. Thank God.
Oh, yeah, from the.
Again, not 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 a hundred percent certain, some people don't have a good package, but this is a piece of paper, okay? No, I'm just trying to help them get there. Their original proposal for public outreach had ranges for different outlets. So the lower number was forty four, the higher number was seventy five.
But they were all set with that, just let's pin our last number for the design.
So you think that's, you could launch there.
Four four five two. Unless unless we're backing out, as it was said already, a public outreach is from that.
So what's that final number for your contract? He said there's a difference, so let's get that worked out now. The other thing we would we would also ask is if we could get the um, the manganese contract so we can start over.
So Nancy, if we borrowed the three point two, which is those three components, but you said four hundred is coming out of the budget. How do you, you just figure all that out later?
Yeah, we're we're going to have to dip into the five million.
Yeah, you know, I'm saying some of it isn't part of this project, some of it is part of.
Yeah, so we'll still do that account and stuff.
So we're borrowing some money that's really for the budget.
We, no, we borrowed the full four million for the project because it was authorized in two thousand nineteen, so we have funds available in that authorization. And we have at least four hundred thousand dollars available in the budget because of the budgeted debt service payment we don't have to make.
Right, so but the allocation of the three point two is for both of those.
And then the whatever is covered by those two will be part of the fifty nine.
I think I get that, the three point two is not coming from, it's coming from two sources. Three, right, three, three point five of fifty and a hundred.
This is, are we on a time constraint, so we have to prove this number right?
Well, you want to get the manganese stuff.
Well, if if we could get the manganese in in your guys' thoughts, yeah, PR is reasonable, that's fine, I don't want to dig everything up.
So can we, how do we make a motion here and move this along? But get the answer.
It can exclude the delta, it'll explain it.
Yeah, that's right, I mean, we could exclude the delta um, in in award it. For four million, do the six hundred and thirty, uh, the four, thirty five thousand dollars.
That's what I would recommend, so I just feel like it makes a.
Yeah.
The more we can keep going with this and keep that going, it'd be infectious.
Because you have to still be stood on it so you get your numbers straight.
Okay, so. Yeah, it's like four hundred thousand less than the three two. Nancy, what do you think? We're going to fix it up next meeting anyways.
Yeah, we'll fix it up next meeting, I can give you the numbers that I have.
Okay, so what do we make the motion for tonight? Two point eight, the number that we believe.
I would go with the the lesser number, the number that you're comfortable with, and it can be amended based on the meeting.
Right, someone make a motion for two point eight eight one?
To move this select board award. Two point eight.
And they could move yet to select one and then the original phase one and phase two contract for the final engineering permitting services. For a new water treatment facility to Wood, uh, to Woodbury Garden for a total sum not to exceed two point eight eight one. Million dollars and it includes final design permitting, public outreach and manganese pilot stuff.
Oh, seven. Seven.
Second one is probably further discussion, anyone out there yet? Chris, how's the math look? All right, all in favor?
Hi.
All right, continue ahead, and then can you just put this on the agenda for next week where we just talk about that other four hundred?
On January tenth, yes.
Thank you very much, sorry I took too long if it did.
No, it's important and I will. Wasn't quite given. We'll figure it out. Thanks.
Do you amend the amount too, just for my.
Two point eight eight one.
Two point eight eight, okay, that's what I have to.
All right, so the next hot topic is review and discuss twenty twenty four department budgets. And the first one we're going to do this evening is the water waste net price fund, number sixty six. How are you? Great. Why don't you start by telling us about your accomplishments and what you see in store for the next year?
My accomplishments, uh, we we see, I applied for and received a grant of one million dollars for the co-partway float. Uh, replacement project in the Seaport Economic Council. I then uh, applied for and received a grant, we discussed earlier, a grant sixty seven thousand. For dredging permits, engineering and design of Citroen Harbor in the Seaport Economic Council. I applied for and received a grant of sixty five thousand dollars from the fishing and voting access for a. Compound station at Jericho Road, State Building. I applied for and received another three hundred thousand dollar grant from the Seaport Economic Council. For additional funds for the co-partway replacement float replacement project. I added three slips that were previously not part of Marina. Over at the Citroen Marina Park, they're forty foot slips. And which adds another park control thousand dollars a year to our water waste net price. It also is. Got three or four of our boats, which is a forward looking in for a radar. And trained on that summer, fire department. We worked with the. Last year was the emergency, big bang, bank, come up. Work seamlessly with the fire department and the other agencies. And all, all three schools were saved. Ate the boat in the first year. So those are some of my bigger contributions.
What was the total grant number about?
So it was about one point eight million. And then we got, and the Highland project was just short of a million dollars. Probably actually with the uh, PDA, Massachusetts Department of Public Access. Probably about another million dollars for that project, so. The total cost of co-partway marine projects about three and a half million dollars. But it'll be a brand new, beautiful, so. The nicest marina in town, it'll be here for a long, long time.
And what's the top goals for the upcoming year?
Uh, comprehensive dredge permit, um, you know, we did, we're a little ahead of schedule, we did select the consultant. The dredge areas, the, you know, we're going to go up there actually with the consultants to figure out, you know, where the areas are kind of in. And so we worked with the con, uh, consultant on the comprehensive dredge permit. More training with uh, fire department, PD and cross guide, environmental police. And uh, always we continue paying the pieces to have messages to improve the customer experience. Sometimes that's easier said than done.
Any questions for Stephen or Karen?
Just a couple of, you you did highlight in numerous that the facilities are not any compliant and there's issues. Is that, is that identified, is that part of the studies, or I didn't see any capital that.
So in my capital plan, I, um, it's further down the road. I put in a hundred and seventy thousand dollars to uh, come up with a plan to work with the heart masthead building. Whether it's to use the existing structure and make corrections to it. It was built in nineteen eighty four, bathrooms, it's, say they're in a handy gap accessible, they're really hot. Um, the showers, we have an ADA shower. Um, if you were in a wheelchair, you'd have to roll in, turn the water on, chair, you and your chair would be flat. So it was great in eighty four, we probably have our time back now, but by today's standards, just as it. So that's what I was talking about.
So the one seven is?
It's would be design and engineering.
Yes, is that where I didn't see the flex in this one?
It's in my capital plan down the road, it's not in this budget.
Yeah, oh, it is in the capital, okay, I can find it number.
If you, if you look, you're like three. You know, we're on a five year cycle, I can't see um, year two.
I'll, I'll have a question.
That can be adjusted.
Does your office do anything with the manager of the DAFLA?
Yes.
Because it doesn't seem to pop up, like if you go, you're on DAFLA and stuff.
If you type in um, Citroen, co-partway, it generally pops up first.
It will.
It's based on your, if you have it set, if you have DAFLA um, settings are set at location.
Yep.
And you're at the top here. Mill Warf may pop up first, or your DAFLA may pop up first based on where your location is.
So you are catching.
But, yeah, we actually use DAFLA, it's really made things a whole lot easier. And our reservations are generally full. You know, we have to continue to work with patrons that, you know, if they leave for a day or two, we need to cover this, and it's, it's always a challenge.
You know, in um, work fees, um, how many? About plus a hundred thousand? What is an average wage per year?
I don't know. Uh, so does a hundred and twenty five go a waterway usually last year? And eight dollars per foot for boat, so the average boat in Citroen Harbor is thirty feet, thirty times eight dollars. Plus, plus a hundred and twenty five a month for the season. That was six dollars a foot, it went to eight last year. The Marina fees were a hundred dollars a foot for a resident for splits. And one to forty for a non-resident, we went by a sphere to a hundred and ten dollars a foot for a resident and a hundred and fifty four dollars for a non-resident, about ten percent.
Any other question?
Hold, hold.
You got a whole lot more with this left.
I mean, is that, say it's not enough, what's the number of, you think, the profit?
Oh, I I was just, you know, for the amount of work we do for more.
Is that market?
That's market for more, yeah.
What about the split stuff?
It depends on uh, if you're looking at private arenas or public municipal arenas. You know, I think Brian Kelly did a survey and we were at the uh, higher end on the municipal arenas. But I know that Mill Warf, uh, this year is charging, I believe it's two hundred million dollars a foot for a. A returning patron and for a new patron, it's one, I heard today, I believe they said one sixteen, uh, three sixty five.
I'm sorry, Steve, could you just repeat the average cost of more for more?
So i- if you uh, take eight dollars a foot times, you know, ten foot old, it's eighty dollars, you know, uh, or one sixty foot, yes, it's a first season.
All right, thank you, sorry.
No worries.
Any other questions, Karen?
Yeah, so I have. I assume that more for Marina fees are related to the amenities that the Marina owner.
Yes, yes.
Do we supply, I I don't.
Yeah, we suppo, we supply.
They look pretty dependent if you look at the Marina's casualty.
Yeah, we have bathrooms, we have showers, uh, we also are there from eight AM until midnight, which some of the other arenas are not. Yeah, I can say that's uh, showers bathrooms.
So I'm not picking on Mill Warf, but it looks just, are they substantially better?
No, they're just private and.
And what's the benefit to the owner, I mean, to the the boat owner to pay that much more?
To get us lift. It's supplying, it's, it's just supplying.
Should we be charging more?
That's, that's something that jumped up this year, right?
Yeah, we want to raise it by a ten percent.
So they.
Ages.
They did, yes. The whole market went crazy, yes.
Yeah.
I mean, both um, both of the marine, they're still around.
All right, I just want to make sure that if we're supplying similar services and amenities, that we're not officially low.
Yeah, and those are, that's, Waterways actually makes the recommendation on.
And who gives the recommendations?
The select.
Okay, just making sure, just because they make the recommendation, and I like Waterways very much.
Yep.
Doesn't mean that we couldn't make different decisions.
Right.
So one last question, what is CBAFC Marina Island? They used to provide two hundred and forty eight thousand dollars in revenue, then this year it's zero. It's it's at the bottom for the revenue sheet. C A C, Marina Island.
It's Seaport Economic Advisor Council, a grant.
It's a grant.
A C, it's Seaport Economic, Seaport Advisory. Now Seaport Economic Council.
It wasn't, it just sort of disappeared itself, okay, thank you.
So your budget is um, revenue is expected to be on one form three, um, expenses including debt. Uh, we have a surplus of about five thousand dollars is what the budget is showing, looks like we have about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, oh no. Sorry, two hundred and ninety one thousand dollars in retained or.
Yes.
Can you go over those numbers?
Yeah, I'm sorry, doesn't have, I think, I think the um, our income is a little conservative. And, but. I try to watch every penny and I collect for every guy that's available.
So the last actions that we have um, in twenty twenty one was a surplus of a hundred and forty thousand dollars in twenty twenty two, about the same. Any other questions for Stephen? Great, thanks for coming in, and we will, we will involve them in the end once we see what. I'm not sure much, they have a few. Okay.
He's coming later.
Oh, yes. Okay. Thanks, Dean, I would.
Next, we're going to Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Merry Christmas.
Congratulations on that last one.
Um, facilities is the next budget we're going to go over, Kevin? Or ten?
Good evening.
Good, Kevin, how are you?
Great, and all of you?
So we've got your documents here, if you want to just tell us a few highlights and show us kind of what your biggest plans for next year are?
Sure. So reaching some of my accomplishments, um, removing the uh, reinstall insulation, no piping downstairs in this building. No piping downstairs in this building, which doesn't sound like much, but it was a really big task. Uh, there was abatement involved and all the insulation there was all compromised and not working at all. Which was affecting the cooling, well, the heating, but both systems, so it was a really big job and really great job to get done. Um, replacing the garage doors in five section one, also a great job, some of those were original doors. Um, and all of them were compromised, and that was a great project. Um, we, we hired our new HVAC technician, which has been great, and he has been wonderful, and, um, going well and very beneficial, thank you for that approval. Uh, painting a building exterior. And, um, I am on the project team for the, uh, proposed elementary school. M S P A. And then some of my risks and challenges for, um, fiscal twenty-three were the, uh, management completion of capital projects, which we are still working on continuously and going okay. Um, managing the warranty period at the new senior center, which, um, some of that is still going on, but, uh, we were out of warranty period, but it's just a lot of work, like the new building. Um, uh, building management systems in various buildings, takes a lot of our time, but that is going to decrease with our new HVAC tech. Uh, we're looking forward to that, which is already happening, and, um, managing food pantry and recreation pile in old days. And then some of my goals, um, would be to, uh, train and develop the new HVAC technician, um, get well working with, uh, existing staff, and also establish some consistent policies and procedures for outside users in all our spaces. We, we use more space than people think for outside use, for people renting space and using space for meetings, and we're trying to get more consistent. You know, what rules are across the board for each of those spaces, and, um, that's going to help a lot of things. Um, utility work and grant work, uh, working with the O V R to, uh, continue our green immunity grant program. Um, working with the help of Corey and Coastal Resources, which has been great. Um, working with National Grid also for, um, incentive offerings and concentrating on more charging stations throughout the time for electric vehicles. We've, uh, we've already embedded a few times on that, working on that. And then, um, capital budget as always, you know, manage our multiple proof and project, improvement projects. And, um, we're trying to secure internships for assisting in those projects. I've applied with Mass Maritime to get a co-op through their semesters, they offer, and offer capital projects through their engineering program. So, and then on the, do you want me to talk about the money side or?
Well, I'll, I'll ask you, open that one second.
Okay.
One quick question, I know that the HVAC tech is vacant in your budget, that just happened?
Into?
Cause the, we just hired, or the?
Yes, yes, we just hired and worked.
And was it, was it what we're hoping for, like a, a retired person, or is it?
Actually, just the opposite.
A young?
Yeah, we had a young guy who was up working, jobbing for another company doing exactly what we want him to do here, but he was all over the state. And, uh, he was looking for something, and he wasn't doing that, and he's been great.
Great.
He's been great.
Good job. Uh, any questions? Karen?
I just have, um, one, hi, thanks, Karen. Um, when you talk about the warranty period at the new senior center and the risk, could you just expand a little bit? You know, what you see as the biggest risk here, cause that's always, that'll come at us as an expense, right, so?
So it, not as much a risk during the expense part of it, because a lot of it is covered under the warranty. But it's a lot of time working through the challenges of the things that don't work right. We had a lot of problems in the kitchen, uh, with the stove, with the oven, with the exhaust hood. And working through those with the company, some additional cost was incurred with those, and some of the things are, are not a hundred percent working at this time.
That happened after the warranty expired?
No, during the warranty period. And now that the warranty period is up, most of the things are working properly, but there's a few things that we're still working on.
And are these still on the book, I would hope to prepare those and to identify then prior to respiring?
In theory, yes. Mm-hmm, yeah, because it dawned record that those things were still a problem.
Is that really the only issue, is the kitchen or what other things?
Uh, we had a problem with the heating system during a freeze-up last, last February. Uh, which was a substantial problem, we didn't have adequate heat for a couple of days. Um, there's a, there's a air handler on the roof that's been giving us some problems. Um, that's all been resolved. Um, some dual leaks, uh, those have all been resolved, except one we're still chasing. Um, but most of the things have been resolved, they weren't a challenge financially as much as they were time and effort. And just staying after, and a lot of arguing and debating with people.
Right.
With the great assistance of Steve Kirk.
Do you kind of just consider those like part of the course of construction type?
Yes, there's a lot of work involved in opening a new building.
Yeah, okay.
And the break-in period is easily eighteen months. Easily. Things going off.
Yeah.
Warranted seventy.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, this is awful.
Karen, comment?
Yeah, just generally speaking, where are we on the capital via the facilities improvement plan? Are you satisfied with the progress we're making, cause I know it was like pages and pages and pages and pages.
It is pages and pages and pages, and it, it, it's a great document, and there's been money put in for each year. Uh, so, and we just submitted for year three, and of the year one and two projects, we are still working on those.
And this for everyone is basically the maintenance plan for all of our facilities, right?
Yes, schools and town, sorry, all the buildings.
Because that's been a perennial complaint, that we don't take care of things, but I think we're making great strides in taking care of things.
Right. It, it greatly addresses the deferred maintenance that we don't get to, because of time, all funding, and it, it is addressed all that.
Yes. More, that it's actually identified and it's somewhere and someone's accountable for it.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, thank you.
With Nancy's help, a roadmap has been put out each year and what was it been?
Before, uh, I would just feedback on that question, so that is a big issue in town, you know, the, the maintenance dollars.
Absolutely.
Is that, that, is it, is part of the solution to that hiring another person? Or is it really getting contractors to come in and do the repair that needs to be done?
Well, a lot of the work that is in that plan will be done by hired contractors, not by our own staff.
So hiring another carpenter isn't gonna escalate that?
I, I don't think so. I, I think that now that we have this HVAC tech, a combination of, uh, once that person gets acclimated to everything and we, we're, you know, not constantly putting fires out, it also frees up our maintenance tech to do more preventive maintenance things and help with deferred maintenance. Could be great.
Yeah, we're, thank you, we're so lucky to have your experience and all this.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate the support.
Well, it's, um, the, one thing I just wanna highlight is you mentioned the, the food pantry directly in old days. Which is, um, I just, if you could expand a little bit about the challenges of using that facility to find the test for that facility.
So, basically, I mean, assuming everybody knows that it's no surprise at the age of the building. Uh, that many of the systems are old and in disrepair. And that takes a lot of attention and a lot of funds to, to get those working as they do, and then the challenge there, it can be that, you know, we don't like to put Band-Aids on things, on anything that we do. But if something happens in that building that is substantial, it, we're not going to necessarily do the same thing we would in a building that is fully occupied and we know we're going to be used for years. So we're forced to be a little creative and, and do things a little, again, it's not a Band-Aid, it has to be fixed, especially if it's life safety. A, a, a good example is we had a, a pretty big condensate pipe, um, break last month. A pump went with it, and it involved abatement, involved a lot of different things, it got costly quick. But we, we put it back together so it will work as we need it to work. And I'm not gonna sit here and say we did it wrong, we did it right, it's working properly, but it might have been done differently. If the building was being used differently, or we knew the use of the building, so it's, it's challenging. Cause you, you just need to be creative and, and get different ways to do things. And, and like, the boiler in the building, we only have one boiler there instead of three, it was three when it was a school, there's just one there now. It's adequate, it works, but it needs a lot of T L C to get it to work. So those types of things.
My other question, Chris.
Yeah?
Is, and obviously we're gonna have more conversation about that and investments in those buildings, which outside of your budget right now, but, um, you did mention in your goals, the, and I, I just wanted, uh, better work with enterprise fund departments to assist with the facilities.
Mm-hmm.
What did you mean by that?
So, I feel like we're striking on a common theme here about the new HVAC person in the, in the staff, but it, literally, it's, it, we've gone from a staff of one, one and a half, two, to a bigger staff of people. And places like, so the departments that are enterprise funds, they are staffed by people that are tradespeople by nature. So a lot of times, they did a lot of their facilities repairs themselves as they needed. Now that we are better staffed, we're better equipped to help them with some of their facilities needs, haven't been passed as much. We would help them with some things, but not the day-to-day type things, they would take care of themselves. And once we get our work, once Munis comes online with the new work request system, they'll be involved in that, and be able to put in a work request and move on and take care of it. So we'll be taking care of all of us. Not that we don't take care of them now, but they, they help us out a lot by their own staff doing some of their own things. So it puts, it puts us more in there as, you know, the product gets more whole.
Great. So if we look at the numbers, uh, the, uh, budget last year was one point four, five, six. The budget requested was one point five, the budget recommended is one point four, two, six. And the majority of that was, uh, the public buildings, uh, capital reports.
And the, uh, fuel. And the lubricants.
And, well, that was sixty and that.
Yeah, that was the biggest increase, went in, and utilities also, got it. Managed to find a way to do kind of incent, send increase on utilities across the board. But, and so, come in, thirty thousand dollars lost the last year, I think.
Any questions on these numbers? The staff is going up a little bit to one, two, three, six, seven, eight, nine people, or, or eight. One is a preservationist. It's that's.
It's that's part.
Yeah, yeah, that's just a piece of chest.
Yeah, yes.
So, hey. But I think the HVAC person's gonna help a ton, um, and, um, you know, great job on the.
Yeah, thank you, you're not going well.
Yeah, so we're getting reports in terms of what's, what's being worked on the most.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Kevin, thank you very much.
Thank you all, have a great Christmas.
You too, Merry Christmas.
And holidays.
Okay, well, Seth, Seth, you doing that one?
Yeah, uh, yes, yes, I'm gonna do that.
Okay, I'm gonna actually ask if we can make a quick change, make a quick change. I see Pam sitting there, are you only here for, are you here for other stuff or just that Pam?
My budget and the van.
Okay, so you're coming up on your budget then, so.
Yeah, he moved for me.
Um.
I am here for the meeting, so if you want me to.
So, yeah, why don't we have Pam come up, and we'll do you afterward, Seth, cause you're gonna be sitting there, uh, listening ahead. Yeah, come on in. So we'll do, uh, the trailer collector one forty-five, and then you're, you're doing all of us, right?
I am.
Yes. All right, well, why don't you tell us, again, kind of start out, tell us a few of your big achievements, and then what your kind of goals are for the upcoming year?
Okay, so, uh, those are my accomplishments. In FY twenty-two, we, around nineteen process that would be a tax title, that was a half a million dollars. Uh, of course, I have not given up on tax title, but I, because of the conditions, I haven't pressed it as much as I was in the past, I've now started up again, um, pressing. I have a couple of, uh, homes that are going into foreclosure actually. So, um, hopefully we can get that squared away, but right now it's gotta be done. Uh, we got a successful culture, um, sale down FY twenty-two, we got a back on tax rule on children. Um, we successfully maintained a ninety percent collection rate or more on all of our collections, um, continue to work with departments. Uh, the wellness committee, we still have, it's more, um, online activity, uh, we've started now to get in-person, hopefully with COVID coming back, who knows if that will be put off some more, but we're trying to get that up and running again. Uh, we work very closely with the building department, with the permit, permize. So permitting is being, um, signed off on by me, uh, with the building department. And it's, uh, definitely been very successful. Um, we've been able to collect outstanding real estate and water bills. If they wanna permit, everything has to be paid to day, to date, so that's been great, um. Some things that, uh, we're working on now, some of my goals, we've already started, we've already got them in play, uh, which recently have, have a credit card machine at the counter, it's not, and which is great, um, I've had a lot of people inquire why we don't, so now we do. We also have, uh, a remote deposit machine. So instead of having to go to the bank every day, which I, I do, um, I don't have to go as often, you can run the checks right through the credit card deposit and, uh, goes right into the bank and it's available right then. Uh, it's excellent, I don't have to go to the bank when there's cash and gold. Um, so that's already in progress with one of my goals, also the goals of the sale of the foreclosed properties. Nancy, Gemini, and Joe, the assessor, have already met and went over the list, and we've discussed on which properties we think are, um, should be evaluated to sell. Um, and then we've passed on that list to building conservation planning and to get their input. Um, Nancy's got all of them back, and, um, she's now, uh, come back with a list, and we'll meet again to go over that. So we'll be doing that for a sale on those properties and get that back on the tax bill hopefully.
Oh, oh, that's like a long thought, I mean, will be nineteen, huh? It'll land, it'll come back before you, yeah, whatever, I'm just curious.
Yeah. Um, so I've already collected, um, twelve out of my fifteen tax title accounts, because like I said, I'm, I've started that up, not trying to be this nice guy, but not all the time. So, um, I also started investing in U S Treasury bonds because the rates are so great. Although my bank's rates are pretty great too, so I can work with these banks, I have great reputation with lots of them. So if I tell them what I need to have, most of them will come around to that also. Um, you know as well as I do that the town of Situate at this time of the year, we need to have liquid funds. So I need to have some funds in the bank. I can't put them all in investments, although I'd like to because the rates are great, but my bank rates are kind of right up there with Treasury bonds also.
What are the G bill rates now, Bill?
Uh, as of today, they're a four point two five or six months, but I have banks that are giving me four, so. Uh, and I can move that money and I don't have to pay anybody to watch it, I watch it. Um, you know, plus money to invest in funds and Treasury. So, um, you know, I, M M D T right now is four point three seven percent, that's a bank. They dabble in the U S Treasury also, and, uh, I don't have to pay them, I just keep my money there, so. Um, yeah, it's just rates, the interest rates have definitely come up, hopefully they'll continue to come up. But as you can see, when I talk to you about my van and the bond, I mean, you're getting better rates on your money, but it's costing you more money to borrow.
I thought that was a mis.
Yeah, it was a little taken off by that. Um, we're working on a P C compliance report, uh, making sure that, uh, we're P C compliant, P C I compliant with all our credit card machines at our off-site facilities, uh, so that is something that definitely needs to be done. Uh, so that is something that definitely needs to be done. And, uh, we have $9,000, uh, 9,000 real estate bills that will go out, be mailed on December 26th. And there's over $440,000 of outstanding water bills that were linked to those, to those real estate tax bills. So, um, a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
All right, that's great. Um, and I do want to reiterate that you do work with anybody. So if you if you are in a situation, just call Pam. She'll work out the plan of the very, very reasonable level customer service aspect of each other's. You have a relatively easy budget. Um, it's just, you know, your people and, um, and some of the same services that you use. Last year's budget was 441,000, we requested 472 and the town administrators recommending 466. Pretty level funded, just annuals going down a little bit.
You do, the billing actually went up a little bit.
Uh, down from, I'm sorry, from your request.
Yeah, um.
Any questions for Pam? Yes?
Yeah, is the 440,000 in links, water bills, is that unusually high?
Uh, no, actually it's above that every year.
It's above that?
It's about, uh, 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 that, okay. It's about half a million every year.
Well, I'm just curious if people were protesting somehow that they didn't like their water bills, so they're not paying them.
Actually, it's usually a little bit higher. I mean, people are paying their water bills if they want to do something to their house, they can't unless they have a water bill. So that's definitely helping.
Any other questions?
No.
All right.
That's the the beauty of the new software system. When someone wants to get building permit, PM has to click. You all caught up on all your taxes and all the fees and stuff.
So we're gonna go ahead and.
Good for us, yeah, for them.
The next budget is the 158, which is the taxable closure.
Okay, so I I kind of talked about that a little bit in my treasurer's, uh, budget. We've been pretty successful with collecting some of these now because people are also selling their homes. So in order to sell your home, you have to pay off your tax liens. Um, we have 20, 27 parcels for outstanding FY '22 real estate taxes that I'll be, um, advertising in the paper shortly until the holidays. Uh, so if people still have FY '22 outstanding real estate taxes, you still have a lot of weaker sort of remaining pay off.
And this line item is 39,000. This is just the fees associated with it.
All of that.
Right, two years ago was 21,000, last year it's 39,000. This year's budget is 39,000. Any questions for this? All right. Next one is debt service, which is 720.
So debt service, we, um, just try to keep it smooth, kind of billing our debt service. Try to keep it as smooth as we can. I've seen in the last couple of meetings and tonight that it's getting higher to, um, the rates are higher tomorrow night. So the timing of when we go out to bond or ban is really important to watch. But we've maintained the double A plus, um, so standard of course, and we hope to get triple A. We haven't given up on that. It's looking promising, so hopefully, um.
So these numbers are a little bit inflated because it has not the general obligation, it has the override number. So do you, yes, do you have the, uh, general obligation numbers?
I think PM, I think asking for narrative.
It's, um, the first page, bottom.
So the tax supported amount is usually global, two million dollars and it's 1.8. Down from, is that 1.9 last year? Great, so some debt is clearly falling off. And then, uh, then it breaks down on the enterprise zones, which go on their own budget, so. Right, well, that's the main of the game is keeping that number. You know, as most people know, we use our free cash to to really move our capital plans forward. We try and keep our debt number in here level, which only really allows for, correct me if I'm wrong Nancy, but a million and a half to $2 million worth of new debt a year. Uh, we'll keep that debt interest number where we like to see it. And the rest of the stuff is really just generated through through our free cash. So good job keeping that up. Any questions on the debt numbers? Next one is the women's county retirement, 9911.
Yes, so I am a little proud of myself, giving myself a little pound back. I've gotten a little bit more involved with Women's County Retirement. I know their unfunded liability is a thorn in our side every year. Um, and I've been listening to their board meetings via Zoom. And I am now chairman of the treasurer collectors for this board. Um, so I was horrified by how high our rate was when it first came out. And the volatility in the market or the numbers just go crazy every other year. It's, uh, it was supposed to be up 14, 14.4%. And next year was going up, only going up 3.3%. And I just said, you know, this is ridiculous. Why can't there, there's an actual, where am I, we report actual or done? Can't ever say that. Every two years. And it just goes, it seems like the first year after the two years of done, they didn't do a very good job guessing on how much it's gonna be. So that next year, it's just so much, it's so inflated. And then the year after that, it's down again. And we were told several years ago when this unsecured liability happened, that we would, we should expect an 8% increase every year. So I asked them to look at it again and go back and look at it again and try to smooth the numbers a little bit. Yes, you're just kind of putting off when you're gonna be funded or not, right? It's still gonna be fully funded in 2029, but at least the number is not so crazy as it was before. So now that they went back and looked at it again, uh, there's going to be only a 10% increase instead of a 14.4% increase. Which I'm sure when we go back to our fiscal finance committee forecast, uh, the school will be pleased. You know, um, all the other small towns too were just crazy, um, with a high rate for FY '24, '25. So I was instrumental on getting that changed and, um, it was a good thing. I didn't want to push out the funding schedule later, so, um, and I'll do what I can and voice, be the voice of the town and of the treasurer's.
Great.
Thank you.
So the budget is at 8% increase, but did the forecast?
Yours was 1414.
14.4.
So this.
Financial forecast, we used to probably vote to change it.
No, but this will go up. This is eight.
No, it's it's actually 14 and the financial forecast met and raised it.
No, but the number that I'm looking at is an 8% increase over last year's budget.
No, it was 14.4 and now it'll be 10.
It said that the budget might still be 8%, I got an update, the budget.
The narrative said it was 8%.
Way back.
For Women's County Retirement or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're looking at, we're at a condition of 6.8, is that the 10%?
So this hasn't, you know, shows an increase of close to 8% as previously. Yeah, so when we did this, we had no numbers for Women's County Retirement. We didn't have 14.4% yet. We didn't have any numbers from that until November. So we went to November and it was 14.4 and now as of December, it's 10.
So what you mean to say is I know it's in there at eight, it's gotta go to 14. And now you're gonna get fixed back.
Yeah.
But it says now it's not 14. There's the 6.8.
That's a 8%.
That is.
It's too low.
We were told, we were told to expect 8% every year during the unfunded liability in 2029.
Right.
So the other option was to, some towns wanted to extend the unfunded liability.
Okay, well, timing in the same decade.
Exactly.
So.
Yeah.
And I said, no, Tony, because we need to put money in OPE, right?
Okay.
We need to put it somewhere.
Yeah, here too, I am.
Any questions on this? So it's gonna go from 8, 8% to 10%. But don't be upset that it's an increase, it's a trillion degrees.
Well, the budget, like Nancy said, the budget for the town was based on 14, so.
In the forecast.
Right.
All right, next one is, uh, contributory insurance, 914.
Now, this is another guess because we're not sure, we don't get this number until, um, late January, early February. But we have met with Maya a couple of times, Nancy, Jim and I. And we have some high claims out there still, so they said 8% would be a good guess for now. But again, we're not sure. This is a guess number. Um, on the good news is that Medicare rates have decreased for calendar year 2023. So that would be six months for FY '24. Um, that is good. We've been successful on the post 65 that Nancy presented to you last year to get the town a break and get people on medics and, uh, party and that's been successful. It's been a lot of work and I think I want to give Julie Kelly a pat on the back.
Right.
She works hard, she works hard, it's benefits. I don't have to get involved and I really don't want to get involved. But she does a great job.
So if this is in here, it's 6.5%, you're saying it's gonna go to eight?
We don't know, yeah.
I don't, I don't, I'm blending with the zero on the Medicare.
Well, Medicare is in for the retirees, right?
Yeah, it's over 40% in our mortgage, it's on Medicare plans because they're all single.
So we've got to have the health insurance, seven or eight, and we took the discount for the Medicare and we'll see the MMA that's actually there. As we get the, the number, the final number, that's what the FED, the number for the MMA would be close enough for what the others.
Any questions? That total just, uh, for the listeners is, uh, $7.3 million for health insurance for both current, um, employees and the retirees. And that doesn't include the school. Right, or it does, what am I thinking doesn't include the school, the, uh?
Oh, the guy who retired.
Yeah, retired.
Say it there on the mass, ask teachers.
Good, and the last one we're doing tonight for you Pam is 916, which is federal tax.
Yes, my, every year we we do a 4% annual increase was plus a little step in pieces. I guess, and we do the job with that number. That's why they start to.
Like 484 last year, 482 this, excuse me, 848 last year, 882 this year. And that's just taxes that come out of the picture.
Right.
Great, any questions for Pam on that stuff? All right, thank you Pam. Actually, now let's do your, uh, let's do your bond now too.
So I have the end sale.
Actually, who's gonna read all that?
It's me.
Sorry. So on December 14th, the town's situation sold a $770,000 general obligation taxable bond. Anticipation note, it's a ban for the Widows Walk project. Uh, the reason why we this, we had banned this project before, we just rolled it because at the next town meeting, we're gonna be asking for a pay down on the project. Uh, as you know, Widows Walk has had a very successful year. Um, as Nancy, uh, Nancy told me, they have retained earnings of 475,000 as of now. So we're hoping to pay down that 770,000 by like 4, 470-ish.
Nice.
Um.
So that'll be the full debt for the whole project is the 770.
No, that'll, that's the second piece of debt. The, um, original portion was already bonded.
How much was that, do you know?
I'm living in aid.
No. Was it the whole thing only?
No, this is the whole thing.
No, that is the whole thing. It's the other piece of it.
This was left.
Didn't you just ban the first one?
This was left.
Yes.
So I'm hoping to pay it off, that's why it's the first of them.
Well, you're paying off everything outside of the 770.
Yes, that's already, we're paying that down with a, um, a 10-year repayment schedule. But this piece was always a note because it came later. And because we had the opportunity to pay it down, so it was not to increase the operational budget of Widows Walk with long-term debt service, just retire this piece of it.
But wasn't the whole project only 1.8? No, 2, it went over because of the partner.
Yeah.
Uh, so 2.5.
It was about 2.5 all told and this is the other, the other part of it.
So was the first, how much was the first piece, like a million something?
No, it was, I think it was 1.87.
So we're only paying down 400, did we pay?
The 1.87 is already bonded with the rates were lower.
Right, so the 400 grand that you're talking about now is the first amount that we're paying the debt down with our, with retainers.
Yes, towards the standard.
And we want to pay this band down because it's horrible at such a high rate, yeah, all in together.
Right.
So we just rolled it for five months.
So the first one must be about 1.4.
It was 1.8.
700 to 2.5.
And we're paying it 400 down, that'll be 3.
The 1.8 was authorized and it's already long-term bonded and we're paying it through the, repaying it through the operational budget. 770 was the second expectation that was never bonded. It was always gonna note. That's what we're gonna pay off so we don't increase the operational budget with debt at Widows Walk. We have too much debt. So the debt at Widows Walk is never gonna come above 250. And that's, we had, we had those discussions of the sweet spot of where we wanted that debt.
So the first note was 1.8, the second note is gonna be 700,000, brings total debt to 2.5. And you're paying off 400,000, but that brings the debt to three. I don't remember the debt being three for the whole project.
We're paying the 2.5 down to 2.1.
The 770 is gonna get paid off by 470 hopefully, so we'll only have to bond.
Well, the 300 then will roll into the next year.
Well, you're only bonding.
We bonded 1.8, banning the 700.
Yeah, but this is going to debt, the ban is going to debt, right?
It's the bad interest.
No, so we're only paying interest on it. We're gonna pay it down, hopefully it's special town meeting, but.
Then we're paying that 6% interest.
It's because it's taxable. Because it's not tax exempt debt, um, people expect to have a, a higher coupon because they don't have to pay income taxes on it. Most of our debt is tax exempt. People, investors don't have to pay income tax. So Pam, um, called the FA at the time and I think they said the rate for a similar note that was tax exempt was what, about four?
Yeah, 4%. She sold, uh, un, uh, tax exempt ban the same day as this sold. And that was like 3.95 and this was.
That's another reason why we want to pay off this, this note because it would be expensive as a bond. The other, the 1.8, we were able to dilute with other things, so we didn't take taxable hit when we issued it as part of the bond. I think it'll all on online, but you're not gonna like.
So I'll, I'll try and see if I, so we're just making this and making it a ban?
It already was a ban, yes.
We're just rolling a ban below and then we're gonna pay that ban down 400 grand.
Perfect.
I thought this was calling it to a fall.
No.
Interesting, not do that.
Okay.
I didn't want to do that.
And then hopefully next couple of years we pay the.
Hopefully we'll be back in the fall and ask for people to balance at town meeting.
Somebody got it? Finally, Maureen, you got it finally?
Ready, so once, once the question, once the Chris.
Have a motion.
Both approve the sale of German obligation tax code bond anticipation, the anticipation notes in the amount of $770,000 for the Widows Walk all course improvements authorized at the April 2021 town meeting. Second.
Second, my Ms. Thunley, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Uh, no.
Aye, it is yours. Thank you, but.
And I will read, I'll read it out, quote, I, the clerk of the Situate, sorry, start over, it's gonna be long. I, the clerk of the select board of the town of Central Massachusetts, certified that at a meeting of the board held December twentieth, twenty twenty two, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified and that which form was present or following votes would be unanimously cast out of this year upon the official record of the board in custody. Voted to approve the sale of seven hundred and seventy thousand, approved sale of seven hundred and seventy five, seven hundred and seventy eight thousand, six point two five percent general obligation bond anticipation note, subject to federal Massachusetts income tax action, known as the notes, of the town dated January twenty sixth, twenty twenty three, and paid only twenty fifth, twenty twenty three, two five percent on company that part approved interest in any plus a premium of three hundred and forty six dollars and fifty cents. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sales of the notes, the preparation, distribution of the purpose of sale of preliminary official statement dated December seventh, twenty twenty two, and final official statement dated December fourteenth, twenty twenty two, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, being nearby or ratified, confirmed, and adopted. Further voted that the town treasurer and the select board being hereby are authorized to execute the purposes of entertainment, disclosure, and compliance S C C rule fifteen C two dash twelve, such forms as may be approved by mom consult in the town, return taking shall be incorporated by references and words of content that are always proposed in time to time. Further voted that we authorize to track the town treasurer to establish post insured issuance continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the town treasurer or bond consultant is sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place to review and update such procedures in order to comply with relevant securities laws. Further voted that any certificates or documents related to the notes collectively known as documents may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original, all of which shall constitute one of the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart's signature page to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file or by other electronic transition shall be as effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart's signature page to such document, and electronic signatures of any of the documents shall be deemed original signature for the purposes of the documents in all matters of legal or treaty, having the same legal effect as original signatures. Further voted that each member of the select board of the town treasurer being hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, and other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary and convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. I further certify that the agenda for the meeting, a copy of which is attached here, too, was posted on the bulletin board of the town at least twenty four hours before the meeting in compliance of section seven dash the bottom of the town charter. I further certify that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating the place, date, time, and gender of the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of the above votes, was filed by the town clerk, and a copy thereof posted in a mirror conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in or on a municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located or applicable in accordance with alternative amendment of where this prescribed or approved by the attorney general set forth in nine forty C M R twenty nine dot zero three in section two B, at these forty eight hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and weekdays prior to the time of the meeting, remain so posted at the time of the meeting, that no deliberations or decisions in connection with sale of the notes were taken in effect of this session, all in accordance with the general law chapter thirty eight, address eighteen through twenty five, as of.
Thank you, Maureen.
Uh, now, you just have a lot of paperwork assigned, might be that you can appreciate it.
Mike, thanks for coming in, thanks for.
Yeah.
Thanks for everything.
Did you grab a mic down the hallway?
Sure will.
See, glad we got that wiretaps.
And we all benefited from that? Thanks for all that stuff?
Maybe just exhale and just go back there to.
As I was reading, it's a big question.
Hey, you like?
It's hot here, of course. You guys would feel a little late.
We got a couple things, uh, no. Yeah, you're doing my homework.
Okay.
Um. First, we'll do your shellfish budget. Come on, tell us a little bit about, how the year length and what you hope to do next year.
I think we're getting a little early Christmas present with the class opening, January first, so it's been a lot of, kind of see emails, deal with marine fisheries, um, really pushing with constituents to the citizens towns, to the shellfish advisory meetings, really pushing the state, a lot of testing with the sewer plant and the rivers, trying to get back to this point that we lost between a half years of the rivers. Obviously, in the, uh, well, the aquaculture class is still ongoing with, uh, some, um, uh, programs up there for the camp and things like, yeah, we're trying to get back on track and the boundary lines, things like that, so a lot of scene, a lot of things behind the scenes, regulations are all set. We have those five diggers that we identified for up there, so that's still going on, the four boundary points up there. But now a lot of focus is shifted back to the rivers with update, updating of the shellfish regulations that happened in nineteen sixteen. Um, then tonight we're looking for reciprocity, so the shellfish stuff, I'll, I'll touch on that. But I think my job's gonna get much more busy around July first. Not as busy as years past, but now moving forward, it's been a really step, like a lot of people are pretty excited to see where we're at at this point, moving into it tonight.
Right. Any questions?
Uh, but also too, moving forward for next year, I want to, um, focus more on propagation of shellfish. We did lose some areas, I'll talk about that, but there are a lot of good areas still in the rivers that are very viable for shellfish. But I want to start replenishing those areas through, um, funds that we have from both sides of the river. So that way, moving forward, we're always ahead, we never have to reduce areas that people can dig. We always have enough kind of stock in the rivers for people to shellfish. Also, too, we're looking to open the rivers next year, October first. I'll push even further for September first, after the state signs off on all the forms. So I don't want to go too far ahead, but, uh, hopefully get back a lot of real estate in a lot of time, I think a lot of people are pretty happy. It's nothing traditional hundred, um, percent that we had, but not explaining the masses, what was Susan, that it's not as bad as it looks on, on the slides, it's actually, it's not bad. We lost one good, tricky area that people can walk to, but trying to get that back through the test and the sewer plant, sewer plant's been phenomenal, Situate, staff has been awesome. All the tests have been well above par forever, which probably should have never been close first. But, um, everything's been perfect, communication with Bill Brandon, sewer plants, marine fisheries, town staff here, it's been pretty good, so.
Great.
So, I think we're on, on the cusp of some historical stuff with Marshall, Situate, but we're crossing a premise, I don't think anyone in Spickwood does that, so a lot of things there, I just want to go on to the world.
Awesome. For your budget, pretty straightforward, there's a few lines, uh, part time salary and some, a little bit of equipment and some supplies.
Right.
Um, you're able to do what you gotta do with that?
Getting by.
Great.
Getting by.
Any questions for Mike in regards to the budget?
On that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think the whole board would like to thank you guys for, it, this is a tremendous board, we haven't seen it somewhere, but thank you, so.
Pretty excited to be here, I would come here at midnight and speak on this.
Thank you.
Any budget questions?
No.
Great, so that's, thank you for the, the, it's part of our community, it's important that we keep it active, it's important that we do it properly. And, uh, you've taken that on your backs.
Great, great past time, I took a lot of heat over the past two year and a half years, but makes you strong, makes you a better leader, it wasn't just me, but it's good to have you kind of, kind of right behind you, motivate, yes, also deal with constituents and residents, say, hey, Mike, how about this, how about this, but you know, seeing their angle, their perspective of it. You know, obviously you get more, spit honey into vinegar, and the government has one speed sometimes that's not fast, but I can guarantee you that if it wasn't the collaboration with the North South River, we should have some residents in this room and the Shellfish Advisory Committee, that this would have been long forgotten, I, I can promise you that, so. We made a lot of noise, the right direction is gonna be did appropriately professionally, and I think that's why we're here.
Great, great work. Um, all right, so no question on the budget, why don't we, um, we'll, we'll look at the budget in totality, why don't we jump down to the shellfish update, and then Seth, we haven't forgotten you.
I'm, I'm here for the long run, you just do everything else.
You know, it's easy for us to go off on a tangent, so we don't wanna keep these guys here listening about Andrew's ideas on cable program. You want start regulations or?
Yeah.
Do you want to?
Either start point or? How do you want to run it? Thanks.
Yeah, I mean, uh, we're just here to present our reopening plan, right?
Yeah.
But we've closed for two and a half years, or two and a half seasons, I have to go by seasons here. Um, and we have a reopening plan for January first. And we work with D M F, I mean, this is a large, as Mike said, a large state or polar group, um, all the, everybody's an advocate, right? I mean, we have the resident shelfist enthusiast, uh, which I think we've got a representative back there. Um, we've got, we had our state legislators involved, we've had, um, obviously both select boards, we've had, um, both, um, oh, we have one, but both, um, town constables, um, Department of Marine Fisheries, and many other entities. So, um, I have the presentation that D M F gave us, which I thought we, we basically cut out a bunch of it and just did the map, and I thought we would show it so that people at home could see that.
Great.
Um, and then we updated the regulations based on a couple of things, um, reciprocity being one of them. And so we can go through those, I don't know, I mean, I don't know how much more, just how much information you want, but why don't we share screen? And you, um, hold on, let me, yeah, let me pull this up first. And then I can share.
Seth, do you have this presentation?
Uh, Susan, Susan is a co-host, she should be able to share, yep, you got it.
So she'll be.
Already. Yeah. Here we go.
There you go, looks great.
Um, okay, so. Go back, uh, so. Um, this, to the left, all the way left is the historic classification, so that's what we've had for years and years and years. Um, we worked with D M F, um, just briefly, they did a lot of flow studies with U Mass. And, um, from that, the goal was to get to dilution of a thousand to one. Um, and then we worked with them beyond that, since a thousand to one would have been all of the rivers. We worked with them beyond that to get to a dilution of, um, of, of three hundred to one with, um, a lot of testing and a lot of, and the recognition that we have a really amazing treatment plan. So, um, the reopening will have two classifications, we will have November through February, which will be this second map. Um, so you can see that the, um, actually, let me go back to, does it show the, all the flows? Right, he doesn't know, so everything was closed. Everything was closed, all the blue was red. But the second one is November through February, and then third one will be March through May. And the only difference, it's really hard to see this area right here. Right there. So that area is the, in, in winter will be closed and in, um, spring will be open, so you get extra area in spring. And then all of this was red, um, prior to the new classification.
And Ms. Harrison, it is helpful if you circle that on your, um, iPad, so the individual watching by home can see.
I know, I can't circle.
No, that's okay, no, 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 don't worry about it, you're fine.
So red is bad, blue is good.
Red is bad, blue is good, we have, um, more blue than we had um, in the past two and a half years, but we don't have as much blue as we had prior to two and a half years.
Which is far left.
Which is far left, so those are the.
Yeah.
And are they always closed during the summer?
I'm not a shellfish expert.
So, great question, they are always closed for the summer, um, we are also pushing with D M F, this is, this, we don't think we're done here. We're pushing with them to extend the season, um, specifically, we're interested in the fall because it's, um, safer and better weather to be out there digging. So we'd hope, we're hoping for, my hopes for even September, October in the future, but we, we're working with them on testing.
Right.
So, are you on, so we can?
With the, the new winter opening, is that forty six percent what we had? But if you, back to the slide, but really, it showed forty six percent, right? But we, we, we ruined, all actuality, when you look at the M B five, point six and M B six point two here, there's typically no one really digging out here, so that's included in all the hundred percent. So really it says forty six percent, but a face value, it's probably sixty percent.
Like where, just those?
Yeah, so this would be the spit, the east side of the spit here, the backside of the spit, this is the Herring River going up to the wastewater treatment plant. So it really, it seems like forty six percent, but there's really no one digging along Fourth Cliff, there's really no one over there. Other, other shellfishing, or yeah, probably, but it's pretty dynamic and the rip currents are in there pretty bad, too, so no one's really digging along here. But that's all included in the hundred percent. So like I said, forty six percent, it seems like it's less than half, but in actuality, it's actually, not that we lost that area, but no one was really digging there anyway. So it's, it's still a little better than what it actually seems.
It was one of the favorite spots on the backside.
Yes.
So like.
That's the next one.
Further up, yeah. So. Yeah.
And then.
And then do you want to go through the, um, the conditional area management plan? So part of the agreement, so D M F is in charge of fisheries, and then they, um, they determine what you can and cannot do as far as fisheries as well, and we are enforcement. So we have an agreement with them on how we will enforce and how we will notify people if there's a sewer treatment, um, issue or, um, lots of rainfall. And I guess, I, I guess we should flag that we've worked with D M F and, um, Bill Brandon as well on this plan.
Right.
Since he's a signatory as well.
Right.
Oh, and then there's, sorry.
Yeah.
I can go back.
We were out last week.
So there's posts on notifications where it's closed.
Once folks go out, you'll see closure, uh, post here. And Situate here in Marshfield, here in Fourth Cliff, here by the, in Marshall by the Osprey Nest. And then tomorrow I'll be out posting one more sign here and down in here, and that's kind of the winter closure area. But then March first, this whole area opens up. So, and those signs were part of the agreement with the camp, that we had to have those out there. And that's kind of where we sparked this off with reciprocity, because it's kind of hard to see a post in the mud and the rivers. We can argue all day long, what parts of Marshall, what parts of Situate? And really, does it really matter, with the shellfish permits are not really a big generator for any town. But if people are permitted and documented, we, we can at least track what's coming out of there for shellfish. So, and I kind of really wanted to get people back on the flats and not have to go out there and argue Marshall, Situate, of where you were digging. I thought it was best to just have the permit, you were being educated and educate people what's going on, what areas are open, what areas are closed, so.
Like, how do they report what they?
It's a yearly form, back to marine fisheries, of what's, what's the average catch is, what people are taking out.
So every time you go out, you have to, you have to.
It's kind of documented, used up, but yeah, it's, like, I, I suspect, like, deer hunting, the first day, there'll be a lot of people, it's good weather, then they'll slowly drop off. But typically, people are creatures of habit, they kind of have their own hunting hole to go to, they use the same jackets usually, so we kind of know who's in what areas. Um, and that's why with the permits to entirely camp is, with the closure to the sewer plant, if there was some catastrophe that happened, which it has never happened, you created the shellfish placard, which I'll show you guys, and, um, has a couple around. And these are more or less like, if somebody was overdue or out of the flats, because it is strenuous, it is tough work, you can't get stuck in the mud. But if somebody was overdue and their loved one called and said, hey, my husband's not home, my friend's not home, and the police were fired, I went to the area full ram or Herring River or damaged point, that placard was on their vehicle. At least you got a starting point to go locate somebody. And it gives a name, plate number, current number, resident, non-resident, so you kind of know who you're looking for and what area, then you, from there, you're gonna kind of go to your emergency protocol with cell phone things and things like that, because it is cold, it is strenuous, and it's tough to be out there, and that's why we also open it up for seven days a week. So people aren't being forced to go out there on days that's open, they can kind of take a breather and go on a much better day versus, well, hey, it's closed next four days, I need to go out there and go dig. So, we're hoping this kind of limits people's judgment a little bit to take a nicer day to go out and also take their friends, friends, so.
That's a great idea.
Um, and, um, Clark here has these, and her office, she has a twenty twenty three permit. Hopefully, with the approval of the shellfish regs tonight, we'll have reciprocity move forward. I don't think there's any towns in Massachusetts that have reciprocity, to my knowledge of sharing of resources, which is good, but we've, we've kind of always shared resources in rivers and it's good that we have towns like, you know, one, the Marshall, Situate, so, you know, maybe, maybe the future, next year, we, it'll, it'll migrate to the north a little bit, but, um, for now, this is what we have.
We're, actually, Mike mentioned, we are the first town to do twice the number. And we're also the first town in Massachusetts to do a, um, a dilution of three hundred to one. There's a town, they modeled the policy after a town, after, um, I think it's Durham, New Hampshire.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
And I, and I was told, I do, that we're probably only ones that have a sewer plant within our shellfish. And I, and I was told, right, too, that we're probably only ones that have a sewer plant within our shellfish area that's going to be open, based on the, how, how, well, on the treatment plan is.
Yeah. They're very impressed with our treatment plan.
Can you explain three hundred to one?
Yeah, sure, um, it's a dilution based on a spill right at the treatment plant. As to the three hundred, where would, where it would mark three hundred to one, I could actually.
Unless your fluid would come out.
How much would come out and where would be the three hundred to one mark of diluting that fluid to my house.
Oh, I get it.
So, um, but they originally asked for a thousand to one.
Right. That's where we kind of negotiated, we came back with, with Marine Fisheries land, but this is based on an absolute failure. And I said, once you get into Labor Day, I go, Situate kind of is much more quieter because everybody's going home. It's, you know, it's a coastal community town, beach town. And I, and I also said that most of boats are not on mooring, which is also part of the shelter enclosure. You can't have more than twenty boats, a certain amount of areas to dig in. I'm like, there's no boats out here, I go, what, so why are we promoting? So.
Yeah, so it's a great, the three hundred one, a thousand one, if we had to go a thousand to one, all that blue, right?
Yeah.
So think of this as like color on top of color, it's not the best, but everything would be blue, so that's a thousand to one. Five hundred to one's the yellow, the outer layer, then you come in the green. And the red is not red, it's orange because of the color on top of color, but that is the three hundred to one. So, um, those were the dilution, um, markings and the studies that they did. So if they went to a thousand to one, we would not have any sewer opening.
So we can go outside of the red or brown or whatever, all that isn't still.
We can, yeah, it's like the three hundred to one outside of the red.
Right. Yeah, great.
Yes, and that's where that then translates to the maps further down that they did, and.
Great job.
Yes.
Yeah, so it was a team effort and, um, yeah, DMF was actually really good to work, but they, 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 well, yeah.
Not great, but.
You know, they're, they're, um, they really liked that we're doing more like, you know, there's policy and, um, thinking outside the box, um, things.
But also think we needed the placards and boundary signs, the cameras, the email locations, the alert locations. So now when you come into your shellfish permit, you'll have your email and your cell phone. So let's say more areas open, like the software, March first, we can push it out through the alert system, or if it's a bank closure, or whether it's winter's arrangement, if the platform closed. This part's open, this part's open, this part's closed, so it's kind of keep more people more informed and more transparent. Um, then we'll get into the propagation more shellfish, we, we have lots of area, but now we can add more plants to smaller areas as well for more population.
That's great.
It's really good.
Actually, yeah, thank you, Tony, I just wanted to say thank you, I wanted to say thank you also for really calling out this, this sewer treatment plant. Because I think, you know, early on, you know, we all took a hit because of that, because it was sort of, you know, their fault. When there was really never even any record on it, which is what we all fought so hard for to disprove, so thank you. I mean, I know a lot of it was on behalf of the shellfishers as well, but I just thank you for those compliments to kind of clear that air, but it's, yeah.
It's, um, no, they, they've been.
It hits them hard, you know, it's a lot of pride and picture.
They've been, they've been outstanding, and then they've been a passion there for over eighteen months and, um, it's with not one failure, not one failed test. And all those results are posted online too, mind you, all those, you come in, they get posted on the Situate website. So it's, oh, you can't be more transparent than that.
And thanks for adding technology, pushing out, you know, the alerts.
Yeah, what a great thing, right?
Right, right.
Yeah. We'll do the online shellfish permits next next year.
Right, yeah, yeah.
We need a doll.
We, we, we fell short, short of our goals, but that's our goal for next year with the, with online.
Yes.
But, um.
How many, how many, uh, permits do we give out a year about?
It's about a hundred twenty-five prior to the closures, with resident, non-residents, right around, Marshall's probably about the same. So it's, you know, I think people.
Can, can we share with them, they must have other areas in Marshfield that they can.
Yep.
So this, this permit will allow you to go anywhere in Marshfield and vice versa.
Yeah, and Situate too, you can go, and first card.
Right, so for, technically for this year, we have.
Our last three, you can.
There are, there's four permits, you have Marshall resident, non-resident, Situate resident, non-resident. But next year it will just be two colors.
Yeah.
Like I said, it's, we've never, we've never ever been a shellfish guy here since sixteen, Marshall since two thousand and seven. And we never got to a point, we had to manage or close areas for lack of shellfish, we never really had that. Now the two-year, two-year off, like, layoff, it's gonna be even better. You were already out there digging, already looking around, not keeping the clams, but do some scientific digs here and there, and it's, it's plentiful, it's plentiful. Yeah, we, for twenty dollars, fifty dollars, you'll, you'll get your money back in one day.
Can you go over the regulation changes?
Sure.
You don't have to do the select board and.
Yeah.
You know, just the, just the.
You don't need to share, or you wanna just. I don't know, it's not, first one right there, it's not sharing. I can't just read them.
Seth, is there any way you could go?
Ms. Harrison, if you want to send it to me, you, you can't, what, what issues are you having there?
I don't know, it's not.
We can post them on the, the website.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Huge changes, so. Huge, just go over the highlights.
Yeah.
It's not showing it as shareable. For some reason, here, let me go over the highlights. Yeah, so let's not do select board, um, the majority, so the majority of the first page changes were DMF's suggestions. Um, and adding specificity to the definition of shellfish. Again, it's their definition of shellfish, so it's their, they manage shellfishing. Um, uh, number four, the other thing that we wanted to do was we wanted to align it with Marshall regulations. And, um, number four, we added specificity, harvested within twenty-five feet. Um, we aligned the weekend, the weeks, so we had our shellfish week start on Monday and Marshfield started on Sunday. So we aligned the weeks and started on Sunday. Um, let's see, besides, I don't know.
And that was kind of a, not a broad intention, but a question of why, you know, weekends are usually a busy time and that's, most people will be out there, so. So you could go on Saturday for day seven, you could go Sunday as day one. So you had the ability to dig both days in the weekend versus back and forth.
Okay, alright, I'll try to share, I can get a small tweet and like you, for one, um. Let's see, um, and then we added months to it through May, uh, November through May. That was just not in it at the time. We added some signage, again, um, that we will have all these closed areas. Um, twenty is probably the biggest change that we made. Um, Commonwealth Mass veterans are entitled to resident permit rates for recreational shellfish permits upon showing their veteran ID card. That was actually a state law change and we hadn't updated our rights, but we didn't have much open areas, so, um, we're doing that as we do this. And then active Marshfield recreational shellfish permits have reciprocity. And active Marshfield permit holders may shellfish in Situate town waters and comply with all rules and regulations of town of Situate. And as Mark, as Mike pointed out, this does not increase your catch allowance of eight, of eight quarts or one pack per week starting Sunday. Um, so that, that's just, um, to increase, we're hoping it'll increase people going out there, just that there'll be more people, um, additions.
Just one pack.
A quart.
So, but it was, yeah.
It's, it's a lot, make a lot of chowder.
What, nine dollars per hour for steers?
Nine dollars a pack?
But you can't sell any of it.
No.
You cannot, you can give it to your friends.
But if you have the body, it would be nine dollars per pound of steers.
Yeah, you can give it to your friends. Um, and that's pretty, I mean, that's pretty much it. Um, possession of elders, that was just wrong, so we, it didn't make any sense, um. Let's see, and, and that's it, and then select board, we, we didn't make a ton of changes.
No, no.
Um, we really ju, we really just cleaned them up and aligned down with Marshfield so that, so the enforcement was.
So the combination of towns.
You know, you have the same rules.
Well, thank you very much for doing that, I don't have any questions on it, but regardless of how many error, how many changes there are. It still takes a lot of work to cook them all and make sure there's not something else, so I really do appreciate the time and energy that you put into this. And now it's an accurate, great work you got here. Any questions for us? No, so can I have a motion to accept the, um.
Sure, who to approve the recreational shellfish changes to regulations as recommended by the Shellfish Advisory Committee, just like we're saying.
Second by Mr. Goodrich, any further discussion, any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor?
I, I.
Thank you, guys, great work and.
I think we need another, we need a signature on the camp.
Yeah, this is the conditional, conditional area management plan, that would, the chairman would have to sign for us to open July first and then so.
Yeah, I have that, and a signature.
So this is the original, so.
And Marshfield chair signed yesterday.
That's revised one time.
Yep, this is the original, I'll need that.
Thanks, I'll get that.
So that's actually needs Mr. Branton and then to be done, and the rest is history. Then, uh, since you guys approved the regulations, is it okay to start selling shellfish permits tomorrow morning?
Oh, yeah, I would say.
Yes.
Awesome.
Great, welcome back.
Yes.
I know, right?
I want to grab these two placards.
Well, you guys are gonna be getting permits tomorrow, you guys should be ahead of it.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you, thank you.
Through the past few decades, but, um, I'll probably do.
That's it.
Seth, I have not forgotten you, but I'm gonna, um, do the Capitol.
Take, take care of the business first, it's all good, take care of it.
Chris, you wanna come up and, uh? Oh, yeah, you talk right over. Come on up, Chris, there's another else wants to come up.
Sit down, bro, I'm tired.
So, Jim, are we, this isn't actually the review of, this is just really recommendations, we're not going to do item by item, right?
So, yeah, this is the recommendations from the Capitol Committee.
You have, you have in the past had to go item by item, you have in the past, I'll do. Said yes to these, and that would be, what do you want?
So, what, I would, I'm not prepared to go item by item tonight, um, as anybody else. I, I was hoping, I thought this was not the budget item, but actually just you giving us recommendations.
This is my annual, this is my annual report to you guys on our meetings and our efforts over the past two, three months, whatever.
What is the board there?
I don't think we're prepared to know for sure.
Right.
And I think there are only two, two cases that you, the Capitol ten did not, the Capitol planning committee did not agree to the town administrator.
Right, right.
And so that, I think, warrants any with for sure.
All right, Chris, why don't you give us the high level and then we can talk about the items that were in agreement, talk about totals and see where the conversation goes from there.
So, high level, and I don't have actual counts, but high level is, we've been meeting weekly since, May, August, early September. Um, going over Capitol requests, there were, let me get one. The town administrator recommended Capitol plan. There was a total of seven million, seven hundred and nine, uh, thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight in request. After meeting and after our vote, uh, we approved all but four items unanimously. And two were rejected, or two were not recommended. So the total recommended Capitol plan from the Capitol Plan Committee is seven million, four hundred and eighty-four, four eighty-eight. The items that we did not, the items that we debated, uh, were the MS four, so this is, uh, engineering. The municipal separate storm sewer system, if you guys remember what MS four is. Uh, the townwide facilities plan was another that we debated. One of the dump trucks for highway, we debated. And I believe this is supposed to be school technology, uh, we debated. The two that we voted to not recommend were the MS four and the truck for the highway part. The MS four and, uh, the MS four was the reason for the no vote, and this is, uh, per hour minutes from that night. Was the recognition that the proposed project is not considered a Capitol request, but rather an operating expense. On page twenty-four of the town operating budget, since FY ten, the town has not used free cash to subsidize recurring operating expenses. In addition, there was not an attempt to have, uh, free, uh, the town bond rating increased as a result of this policy and has sustained at low. Which reinforces the need to adhere to not using one-time revenue for operating budget. MS four came online ten years ago when I, my first year, uh, on Capitol. And it was supposed to be a short-term, one-time study type of thing that has since gone on yearly or more frequently. And speaking to Sean, you know, when he gave us this report in alcohol, uh, tonight, it is going to become a continuous thing. And the amount is continually going up, um, which no longer makes it a one-time, it makes it an operating expense. This is something that they have to do every year, it's part of their operations, it's, he's got to be in their work schedule, that this is there, the MS four. So that was why that came up as, you know, you don't, this, this is no longer a Capitol expense, it's now an operating expense. Uh, there were other things that, you know, through our debates, we, this same topic came up. Uh, that a lot of the things that are coming through our Capitol have been there for as long as I've been here. Um, and they start looking more like operating expenses than Capitol expenses. And there are good reasons why this is done, um, but we think that it's maybe time to start combing through this a little better. And cleaning up what's Capitol and what's operating. And, uh, we are, you know, we are planning, we have a good and active group this year. Our members, they're asking, you know, deeper questions than they have in the past. So we are planning a meeting on a monthly basis where we can start having these bigger discussions. So when it comes time to help the board come up with their Capitol plan, we'll have these kind of, at least more information, if not federations, next year. Um, moving on, the townwide facilities plan, uh, it was ultimately, uh, a motion to be, we made the motion to recommend, it was five to two. Uh, but that came up in discussion because if you go through that plan, there are a lot of little tiny items, five hundred dollar items, two hundred dollar items. That, yes, we bundled it into the Capitol plan and, you know, we can call them one project, we can fund it for Capitol planning. And again, there are real good reasons to do it, that it allocates the money, but it doesn't bother to do a timeframe. Uh, but a lot of these things could be considered maintenance items in their individual departments. A lot of it had to do with schools. But the other buildings, you know, that need, uh, paint or move, uh, yeah, two hundred eighty-four dollar repairs shouldn't technically be a capital item. You know, but because we did bring it in on that facilities. Uh, study and we decided that we're gonna fund the facilities plan out of capital. Ultimately, that's why we voted yes, but some of those items could be pulled out and put into facilities budget. The other departments, you know, you know, corporate school or fire department, what their maintenance plans. Their, uh, and the school has been doing, uh, more to put money into their maintenance budget. So, you know, maybe other departments can look at that. Um, the next item that we discussed, uh, was one of the, uh, one-ton dump trucks that are being replaced. The reason for the no vote, uh, again, off the minutes, was that there was some expectation that trucks could come down in price. As conditions change and soften in twenty twenty-three. And I think, uh, again, I don't have the count, but there were a lot of trucks, not as many as a couple of years ago, but, uh, there were quite a few trucks on this list. Um, I will say that the decision on this truck was almost, uh, an arbitrary one. Um, it was one too many trucks. Because we do a one-for-one on our, uh, capital, this was to replace a one-ton Dodge that had recently been in for major repairs. So I don't know if the final outcome of those repairs, the status of that truck, if it is definitely to be replaced or what. So I will just put it out there that, uh. It was a little arbitrary choosing that one, but it was basically one too many trucks. And the next one was the school technology and this was the computers. The reason for the no vote was computers have replaced books as a fundamental and main reference tool for student learning. The need for new computers is a recurring expense that will, for the foreseeable future, always be part of necessary yearly school expenses. As an indispensable and necessary tool to perform the operating task, these are operating budget expenses and not considered capital expenses. Again, that same type of, we're always gonna be buying these things. And I don't know if a senior at the end of his. Senior year turns in his computer. I don't think a kindergarten is gonna be picking that one up. But we're, it's been, we've been buying computers yearly. Again, probably not as long here, but the past ten years, but quite a while. I remember.
What one is that, Chris? Is that the one fifty?
Yeah.
That was the one fifty.
What was the value on that?
Yeah, but it's.
They passed it, the very first one.
Yeah, but they passed it.
Yeah, but it, it was approved. It was just another one of those things that came up for discussion.
Right.
The only two that we didn't recommend was the one-ton dump and the, uh, small.
Good.
Um, that's the high level.
Kevin, maybe, or, or Jim, can someone explain MS four a little bit to us?
I would defer to Kevin.
It's an unfounded mandate by the federal government that we have to map all our drainage locations in all our catch basins as well as rainfall. And then different years, there's different statuses, so we have to test and find out if there's phosphates in or different chemicals that are in there. And then continue going on and updating, updating our system as well as our federal mandated, um, maps and paperwork. Uh, permits to the, to the state. So without doing the MS four, we'll keep our compliance.
Who, who does that? Do we hire consultants?
We hire consultants and our guys go out and be able to train them to try to, you know, do some testing to save on costs.
And we're gonna be doing that, it's a yearly thing?
That ongoing thing, yeah. It's not gonna go away.
Yeah.
But, um, on it's.
Yeah, but once the original investment, you.
The original was twenty-five thousand dollars when we were.
The original investment years ago, just to get all the, those software moving and everything.
Yeah.
It was just the preliminary testing to figure out where the outcomes were. And it's been increasing yearly, um, requirements of increasing yield. So that was the funding source for this year for that MS four permit.
And can you, while we get you going, the truck. Um, so you've got, it looks like one is not on either's recommendation, one is approved and one isn't. What's the lead time for that and what's all that?
So the truck that was not on there, we've, you know, with all our equipment, with all the salt water and everything else, we, you know, we have a lot of damage and miscellaneous to the equipment. That truck has some frame problems and George has had a lot of problems with it. It's one of the first Dodgers we got and we switched over to the one tons. And, uh, we have been putting some money into it to keep it going, but it's becoming expensive to run on a regular basis. Um, and it's, it's got it on our computer.
Two thousand fourteen.
We are having, we're having problems with it. It's, there's rust issues with it. It's not performing, um. Standard, and the master mechanics suggested it could be caused by rust usually. So as far as trucks go, we, as of this week, we were able to purchase three F two fifty Super Dooies that will be getting delivery next week. So trucks are becoming more and more available. Uh, we're getting them below sticker price. We're not paying over sticker price. I think we were averaging about twenty-five, three thousand dollars, you know, below cost-wise. And we have a Chevy thirty-five hundred. Will be brought from the municipal bid that I'm told is gonna be built in January. We should see mid-February delivery, so the truck market is in progress.
So do you need two or can you buy the one for a year?
You know, we always need to, you know. We've never said no to truck. No, if, if, I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll bring you out and I'll show you that, you know, if anybody, next storm, anybody wants to pop right around in that truck, gladly we'll, we'll set, yep. Um, it's, it's, it's showing its age. It's got a lot of rust. We're worried about, you know, mechanics worried about a lot of things on that truck. And every time I'm down there, he's complaining about it to me, so, um. Which I'm, you know, a lot of the rest of them too.
Well, so.
So it's really seven trucks.
Well, the two in the, then.
Right, there's, there's seven trucks until three or no four enterprise accounts.
Right.
Uh, one's the fire department dive team, which is a specialized truck, and then really three trucks for highway and grounds. We can pick up trucks, other dump trucks.
Which are replacements of our sanding fleet, which go out the most during storms. Um, you know, kind of critical to us.
Yeah. Well, that's a dump truck, not a pickup truck.
It's a dump truck. It's, it's a dump truck that carries the sand or insults and goes out for all events, weather-related.
Let me open it up to the board. You know, we'll go through all these, probably want details a lot more than this, but, but just from a high level, you know, it's good to see the school. Is asking for one point five million dollars. Um. Engineering department, three hundred fifty thousand.
Uh, just as a highlight, the only borrowing on this is for the waterman replacement for two point three.
Right.
So.
So of the seven point seven million. Oops, seven, yeah, seven point seven million, three million, almost three million is for the water treatment plant. With the replacement maze being the big ticket item there. So any, uh, any questions for Chris or his committee? I mean, you bring up some good points about looking at the items. Typically, capital plan, well. We've got a pretty good system right now that works with the budget, right? It's taken twenty years to get one that kind of all sides buy into and the financial forecast kind of works. By changing some of the structure, it throws stuff off a little. So it's gotta be well thought out.
And we got into. If you've ever been to a capital plan, maybe, we're getting to this discussion. Uh. And there are reasons for it. And, you know, when you listen to how Jim and me are trying to explain it, yes, there are good reasons for doing it sometimes. Uh, but yeah, I think maybe it's time to start going through the column saying, is this, isn't it? And how do we rectify that? Uh, and it's not a, it's not happy news because it does, in, you know, it does mean that we have to find. That money somewhere else. It's not that it just goes from, from the capital line up into operating. You know, it becomes like a spot.
Yeah, so I think it's, I think it's good work and good, uh, you know, dissecting what's going on because if we're gonna spend a hundred fifty grand a year, every year. You know, what if we don't have a capital? What, what, you know, what if we have.
What if we have bigger things and we have.
Mean years that you can only do three things, which you've had in the past. You know, we've, we happen to be doing very well for the last decade, but, um, you have to do that.
Right.
So it's not, not really optimal. So, but I think it needs a bigger, bigger look to say, okay, because we have the percentages working now, we've got the share expenses and you'd really have to figure out.
And that's, like I said, that, and that's what we get into. And when you start looking at that bigger picture, and I mean. You know, uh, we as a committee did our job. We've said, no, we don't think this is capital.
Right.
We'd like to be part of the discussion. We're happy to be part of the discussion moving forward of we through this. And again, we've got a good, active, energetic group now that are willing to put in the work. Um, it's the best group of people I've seen since I've been operating.
Good.
Uh. So, yeah, if. Willing to do the work, we'd like to see, you know, to be more active and we are gonna start meeting a lot. I think we're gonna take January off and pick it up in, in February. The weekly, the weekly meetings were intense, but we get through it. Any questions? Any?
Now, here's, I mean, bringing up the philosophical points, right? A lot of times really, they go away. I mean, it's, I thank you for doing, um. Going line on a line and making sure that we're kind of rethinking some of this because, right, times change, things change, you know, we kind of refer to some of these. Yeah, it was lots of, kind of adjust.
Great. You know, you know, awesome. Well, thank you. We'll dive into each one of these items a little bit more once we get to the next step.
Having come back in, we have, I don't know if you guys can keep the score, we have real minutes though. Okay, detailed minutes. If you need me to come in and explain, we can, but the detail.
Right.
And they're posted on your website?
I believe most of them are, they're getting posted. We have, we have a member that's specifically used to have us posting, so.
That was a long time coming.
Yeah. Surprise.
The thing's sitting during the meetings and stuff, so I'm leaving them there to.
Thank you.
Thanks all, thank you very much. It's a lot of work.
Oh, we're ready now.
Seth. Are you gonna vote on that?
What's that?
You gonna vote on this? This is a motion.
The. Yeah, we're not gonna.
Okay.
We'll look at it. We'll discuss the capital later.
Okay.
Okay, Seth.
Yes, yes, yes.
Hi, are you awake? Yeah, so we're gonna do your budget now. It's number one fifty-nine?
Yes, yes, it is. And I know it is late, so I'm gonna cut straight to the chase here, if you're fine with that, Mr. Vignani?
Cool.
Good.
Well, tell us if, if you, your, your time, we'd love to hear what you've done and what you wanna do, so.
Yes, so I think, I think that I think our narrative numbers all tied together. I'm gonna jump straight to those numbers, if you're fine with that. Um, I'm gonna do the budget. There are two parts to it, salaries and where we're spending that money. So salaries, you'll, no major changes. You will see a small uptick in our part-time salaries and I gotta give a shout out to our amazing. Finance director Nancy Holt for, uh, bringing this up to me. Um, so if you see what we're doing now, it's a hybrid meeting, which means it, it includes, uh, some more people to help. So in the back of the room right there, you'll see Andrew, redhead, hard to miss. He is recording your meeting. He's also putting it on TV. I'm here recording it as well, and I'm also streaming you live on Facebook, so. The point here being that it, 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 it requires more manpower. So that's why you'll see that in the part-time salary, the little uptick. Uh, where, where are we going from there? Um, staff, I do wanna talk, well, I mentioned briefly about staff. I think the big takeaway from this is that our, our staff is small, but we're mighty. We're, we're really everywhere. We cover everything. We cover town, we cover school things, we cover the community. In fact, tonight, we did, obviously, we're doing your meeting. We had a, a performance in the Center for Performing Arts. We had a girls' basketball game. All of those will be available. And by point out, last Thursday night, we had a planning board meeting in the Emergency Operations Center we covered. We had an advisory board in the town library that we covered. We had a zoning board meeting that we covered in town hall, and we had another concert in that, uh, Center for Performing Arts. So I think that is, uh, it's, it's important to know we're everywhere. And sometimes we deal with individuals once, maybe twice a month. And they may not know what we do the rest of the time, but the truth is, we are everywhere. So that's important to know. Um, all right, so where we're spending our money, uh, this is pretty, pretty similar to last year. Uh, three parts, basic TV equipment. This will be a staple on all of our budgets. Uh, the second part is what I'll call reserves. This is, you know, we're an active group. We're everywhere, so we don't know what we're gonna encounter. For instance, maybe we need cameras, maybe we need extension cords. That's what that's there for. Uh, finally, this hybrid new normal media that we're in. Uh, right now, we offer hybrid meetings in three locations, town hall where you are. The town library and the Cituat High School. Now, we are working on the Emergency Operations Center. With that said, that is a capital project just due to the projected amount that that will cost, so that's in the works. Um, and, and with this, the technology is still developing. I think it is very important to remember, even though everyone is very comfortable with Zooms. That this technology, this, where we're at, we're still in this infancy of this new normal. So for instance. Zoom is developing new technology for what we're doing now. So. I know it's not, I mean, it, it works, but for instance, when it comes to things like, uh, audio, sometimes people complain about the audio. Well, Zoom is developing. A, it's like a five or six-point audio system that can attach to the system we're doing, that can go into rooms. So once again, that's, that's really what that last part of where we wanna spend, to be able to experiment with it, to see if it works for us. Uh, what else? Uh. One last note, because we are funded by Comcast, and I didn't really go into that much, but we do, um, we are one hundred percent funded by Comcast. So as you probably are well aware, this, this budget will be different than everyone else, everyone else's that it presents to you. Um, and this also makes us different from other community TV stations, the majority of which are only partially funded by Comcast. They have to fundraise from there, or they don't get any funding whatsoever. So we have that luxury. We do have a ten-year contract with them. It is up in about four years. Um, we do hope they renew, but if they don't, we have to sort of prepare for that. When we talk about Comcast, I wanna mention live capabilities real quick, because I did, I talk a lot about streaming because I think a lot of people watch these, these meetings and what we do online. But it's not to say we don't, it's not to say that the TV audience is not important to us. They are. Um, and so we have live capabilities, obviously, right where you are. And that's what Andrew's doing in the back. He's streaming you live on Comcast Channel Nine. We also have signals in the town library and we have them in the Emergency Operations, Operations Center at the Public Safety Building. Those two locations, the library, the E O C, we have not hooked up yet. And they were put into place right before the pandemic. As Comcast fulfilled its obligation to do that. And we have not hooked them up because. We're still in this new stage, this new, um. With this new normal, I, the, the reason being is that I'm figuring with so much new technology coming out, there's going to be a way to combine both. The on-air TV element and the online element. And I think there are some companies looking into that. But before we actually commit to just doing a on-air mini-TV, I wanna make sure that we can't combine both altogether. So, in conclusion, that would be budget.
Right, so your, your budget, uh, is two hundred ninety-one thousand dollars. Uh, as you mentioned, it all comes from the Comcast revenue, which is on there. Uh, as you mentioned, it all comes from the Comcast revenue, which is on every one of our Comcast bills, the dollar sixty-one a month or whatever it is. And that's great. And how much do we have in that?
Two point five million.
So we only have two point five million dollars in that. So you've got job security for about nine years if Comcast stopped paying. Um, and, um, I know I speak for the whole board, and I love having to speak too, but we're always amazed at the level of work that you do, Seth, and that your team does. You're at, like you said, every event. You're at, uh, not only, uh, you know, town government stuff, but educational school stuff about just, uh, cultural stuff and just social stuff, um, parades and whatever it is. So you do a spectacular job diving into our community and really reporting it out to people, uh, on, on several different mediums. So we've got the, you know, probably older population watches it on TV, the underpopulation probably on their phone. Um, but it's great that you're doing that. It's great that you're thinking that way moving forward, because it's gonna, it's dynamic. It changes every, every week. So it's good to stay in front of that and, you know, invest properly in it for the future, so. So great job. Can you, can you leave it to work? I'll, I'll turn it over to anyone else that wants to add to that.
I'm convinced he's got a twin brother who's saying everything.
Yeah.
Well, to that point, you know, Seth, you do a great job. I also, I also think about quality of life and sustaining that piece. And we've got two point five million dollars sitting in the, whatever, whatever it's called, um, account, you know. Why wouldn't we bring in extra help so these folks have a quality of life and they're gonna stay with us? Yeah, I mean, it's, it's insane, yeah. Um, what he does. And I appreciate it, because he's there all three Monday morning at nine thirty or whatever, you know, just ready to go. And then, you know, you start at nine thirty a year till eleven thirty at night. So these are very long days.
Yeah.
So, uh, that would be my recommendation, is that we take a look at.
Well, Seth, we'll put that, well, I think we've gotta throw that back at you. Um, and say, you know, if there's a plan for growth and more utilization of assets, then you've gotta come to us and say, hey, I could really use X, Y, or Z to, not so you can take more days off. But, uh,
I, I, yeah, well, no, I, I do understand that. It is, uh, you know, our amazing town administrator, a very handsome town administrator, as I like to say, uh, Jim Bedrow, has said to me before, he's like, maybe just hire someone to handle all the Zooms. But the, the truth with the Zooms is, is that sometimes we make that look easy. It's, but it truly is a game of chess, and I do have individuals that help me with that. Um, so, yeah, I mean, if, anything that, that, that is, that's a challenge for me to sort of figure out how we, how we manage that. And because with the Zoom, because so many people are Zooming, we make it easy for them in that we can, we take it from one account, we can change things around and just keep them using that. But no, you're right. I will, uh, if I need something, I will certainly come to that board along with, uh, town administrators.
Yeah, great. Any other comments?
The only question I have is, is, you know, it's all uncharted land, uh, you know, we are, if governor, you know, lists his emergency damage, he's gonna do soon. And then there's gonna be at some point probably legislation that I would think allow us to continue to do hybrid meetings. Um, I think this board needs to have that conversation is, are we going to try to incorporate, like we did a couple of times, a Zoom and options for public participation in addition to in-person? And that's a bigger question for tonight, and it is evolving as we, the rules aren't written and the technology's changing. But I think we need to all be mindful of, you know, direction to Seth's department if, you know, that becomes an opportunity. Certainly, we have a low participation already approved. Pardon me?
We do already have a low participation approved.
But I think that only stands for the governor's.
No, we passed a report even COVID. We have a rule.
The, the governor has extended legislatively hybrid meetings have been extended, but it's not permanent.
Right, yeah.
So the emergency been lifted, but the legislature has extended hybrid meetings and remote meetings. I think for another year, I can look. But it's gonna have to be approved again, or it will lapse a lot of hours.
It goes to March twenty twenty-three. And our remote policy does not include participation from the department.
Right, that's for us.
Oh, that's just for the, right, if you're out of town, we have the office.
That makes sense, thank you. So anyway, you know, I just, it's, it's a, it's gonna be an interesting couple of years figuring this stuff out. And, um, the Wizard has got it on him, and I'm not really. I do think we should call a motion to change the title to the Wizard.
Well, that's Nancy's title.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, Seth. I called Nancy the other day. We'll come up with something else.
We need a good name for Seth, too.
Well, Seth, thank you very much. Thanks for going over your budget with us. And, uh, as you know, we'll wrap it all up when the last budget is served. So, thank you.
May, may the magician, the magician outside, would that be good?
I think the magician.
He's always behind the curtain.
There he goes, yes.
Awesome.
All right, we're now on new business. Um, and the next item is to, uh, close the warrant for spring annual town meeting. We opened that last meeting, and we're closing it down. I have a motion to close the warrant.
Do we have a list of them?
Yeah.
It's in the backup. It's in the backup.
Oh, is it printed here? Is it printed somewhere?
No, it's not printed.
It was not in the.
Instead of it.
I didn't see that.
I didn't see it either.
Something. We can email it to you, mom.
Yeah, I mean, we can reopen it if we find, if something.
Yeah, I just have no idea what's on there.
So we can have some placeholders.
Do you wanna look it?
My hat right here.
Have we had any citizens petitions in, you know?
No, there were not. No citizens petitions.
I still have that I am on.
Yeah.
Next one.
We need to wait.
We can, you know, what up, right? You need to?
Yeah.
Okay, we can reopen this topic.
That's fine, just want to show, but we wouldn't be open for citizens petitions.
Well, if you hope that you open it, it's open now. I can have a motion to approve the warrant.
Motion to approve the warrant. Move to approve, pardon me, close the warrants to the adults. Spring annual special campaign, unable to. Second.
Second by Ms. Conley. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Next, uh, topic of new business is to approve the, uh, twenty twenty-three seasonal population estimate, which is at twenty-eight thousand five hundred. We do this for the ABBCC and for all kinds of things. Is it only been that long? I thought it was already?
Since I've been here, it's twenty-eight.
I have a motion to, um,
Move to approve the twenty twenty-three seasonal population estimate as of July tenth, twenty twenty-three. Our resident population estimate is twenty-eight thousand five hundred. Second.
Second by Ms. Conley. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And unanimous. Now we have some drain layer licenses.
Move to approve renewal of drain layer licenses for Paul, Jay, La, Legel, uh, Jacob, Las, Leo, and Ringler Excavating Corporation, Manchwood, um, Conventic Inc., and CC Construction Inc.
Second by Mr. Goodrich. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. Uh, we have a few new drain layer licenses.
Move to approve drain layers license to Boston Excavation Inc. and the Alsomar Corporation.
Second by Ms. Canfield. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Um, next topic is, uh, discussion vote for a new twenty twenty-three, uh, livery service in town. It's, uh, Fempire Enterprises.
There only one? There only one?
We have coastal livery, and this is Bobby Patton who passed the livery service.
Yeah, I know. Actually, if you use Bobby, then you did a great job.
Yeah, so he's officially applying for that.
Do you use a nice, unlicensed livery?
I didn't know it.
I moved to.
He's just starting, he's just starting.
He's a new bird.
Move to approve the new twenty twenty-three livery license to Fempire Enterprises Inc. through business as Fempire preferred private livery service. Second.
Second by Ms. Conley. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. Great. Um, the annual renewals, we have a few of those to do.
Move to approve common visual licenses for twenty twenty-three. Ina Yogurt Inc. doing business as known as Homemade. Citrus Bagel Inc. doing business as Gunther Tooties. Maria Sub and Pizza Inc. doing business as Maria Sub and Pizza.
Second by Ms. Curran. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. The other livery, renewal of livery license?
Vote to approve the, uh, livery license for twenty twenty-three Coastal Livery.
Second by, second. Mr. Goodrich, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Um, before we do this one, I just wanna, uh, we talked about this on the last meeting. I spoke to, uh, Bob Wohl and, you know, Doug in about this. And, um, he basically said that there's, uh, that they're in compliance and that there's no reason that we could withhold licenses. So that's.
Are we able to send a letter just requesting that?
Yeah, we can send a letter, actually, to clean it up.
Clean it up a little bit?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Again, we're talking about the.
Yeah.
May I?
Yeah.
Is there any regulation for this type of business that they have to fence anywhere?
No.
So we thought there might be, but there's none.
Not for this, not for classroom. If it was on bottom of a graveyard, then there are requirements that it has to be fenced. This is a classroom licensing report.
So what is a classroom license?
Uh, you're scrapping them, as opposed to taking pots and selling them for resale, you're just taking them, scrapping them.
He, he specifically said there's no, there's no reason that you could force them.
Okay.
We can ask next. Yes, set a lot of license for them.
Can I have a motion for the classroom?
Move to
Go ahead.
Move to approve the classroom licenses for twenty twenty-three. Ryan Allen LLC and Christopher Gitchfield doing business as Ray's Repair Shop.
Second by Ms. Curran. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous. Five to zero. And the last one? Will the select board vote to renew the following septic license for twenty twenty-three? And it's Suarez Sanitation Pumping. Move, so moved?
So moved.
Second by
Second.
Mrs. Conley, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. Great. I'm all right. Um, can we use them? Or, does anyone have any thing to update?
Just one.
Karen?
Karen?
Uh, the Star Call did a, a site visit to Board like I link, and I will be discussing it at the meeting on Thursday night.
We did have a walkthrough of some appraisers to, uh, give us a proposal to appraise and dispose of contents of the building, as, as we reported online, the contents. Wasn't too bad.
One, two, ten.
So let's see what we got, uh, to get rid of all the stuff as well.
Uh, we have first meeting of the whole Parkway Committee. Um, we definitely need some engineering, engineering expertise from the town. Uh, no one on the board currently is an engineer. So I requested the town administrator to supplies with engineering expertise for our next meeting. Um, the planning board have a meeting that I attended. Uh, they approved two zoning articles for the warrant. If the board would like them to, to explain what they are, one is common driveways and the other is, I forget, but, um, they approved them. They're also, they need to come in and talk to this board about the requirements of the MBTA and the whole business of housing, affordable housing. They're trying very hard to figure out where, where are we gonna get the land to put this enormous amount of housing that, that they're looking for? And they're coming up with some deadlines, but, um, Jim, I think you left the meeting by the time it came up. They wanted to know, what if we just don't do it? How much money are we foregoing potentially in grants?
Well, we got a two point two million dollar benefit point. We'll be looking for.
I, I mentioned that, but.
A multi millions of dollars for North City will be the shortage. Um, I, I, I gotta get the name of the town wrong, but I believe it was Waltam. Uh, their housing authority lost three hundred thousand dollars in state money
Right.
that they were just penalized because they weren't compliant. So it's not just our budget, but the housing authority then
Right.
suffer. You know, you don't apply for any grants. It doesn't cost you anything, but we apply for a lot of these grants.
Right.
Um, so it could be quite a bit of money. And this, but the thing is, there's a, there's a deadline in January, I believe, to show them how you're gonna do it. You don't have to build the housing. You just have to show the new zone for them.
But given the fact we don't have a ton of vacant land, you'd probably have to build multi-story buildings. But, you know, again.
No, we're just not forwarding North City. I'm sorry.
No, I mean, wasn't this a good paper yesterday that they're changing it because some communities are.
Right, but they're just concerned about their deadlines, but.
So North, North City is someone is on mixed use right now. So if storage run that tomorrow, it's a retail and, and residential, uh, they want all residential.
But they want it by this, they want it by Greenwood's, too.
Well, they want it wherever there's a train station within like a line.
You have to have, I think it's a half mile of each station and you have to have somebody acres of zone for it, has to have so much density. So I know, uh, Cory's working very hot on it. She's working with Sherry. I'll let you ask them come up with at least how it would look, and then they're gonna commit. By the first meeting of January, the second meeting. I think the first meeting is, well, you guys are, they can create, say, okay, here's kinda where we are.
But they, they're interested in this board's, you know, input out now. Um, the Pier Forty-four, um, Chair of Pier Forty-four CPC and got very favorable reception from them, which is good. And, uh, two, two nights later, uh, the chair also appeared at, um, Advisory Committee. So when they were, while we see, and these are these two, um, Pier Forty-four is trying to get ahead of the game here and not wind up an advisory committee in March, and they don't know anything about it. So, um, we're just trying to educate as many boards and committees as possible.
I can send the board their presentation. Uh, I think I was at that meeting where they got the presentation consultant. It was around the eye opening. Any structure that we build on that site? Eighteen feet.
Yeah, I'd love to see that.
Um, so I think they said a, a ramp would have to be sixty-five feet or sixty-eight feet long to meet the requirements to get up that high. So it kinda takes some of the buildings we talked about off the table, uh, but they are thinking outside the box for some sort of, at least seasonal restaurants that we could do down there. So, um, but there's some of the ideas they have for, for buildings, and when they say eighteen feet, they're just, it's just so, but I can, I can send that along.
Um, just to piggyback on that, Brian, can we set up a joint meeting with the planning board? Um, after the holidays, maybe end of July, see if we can find a date where we can just convene with them and talk about issues.
Joint meeting with the planning board, end of July?
End of Ju- January, I'm sorry.
Okay, so July, I was checking.
Yeah, I do, I'm saying that. Yeah.
June first.
How many Janes?
Four days.
All right, do we have correspondence?
Uh, we do have a little bit. So we have the grant update. We have a new grant as we come in. So our total um, year-to-date from January twenty twenty-two is eleven million, three hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars, forty, forty dollars. Just wondering. Anyway, it's a lot, like, so thank you to everybody. As Jim said, we do apply for grants, and it's a great number, you know? Guys, thank you for all your work, everybody. This, this is across all departments. Uh, let's see. I don't really know this, what this correspondence was with regards to revolving funds. It's just like.
Hey, I told you I would give you the excerpt from the general bio logs of all the revolving funds and who could expect from nothing alike, so.
Uh,
Happy reading.
Previous discussion, okay, I just wasn't, it was just, it was kinda there in your context, so I wasn't really sure about this, yeah. So there's the asset.
You didn't answer.
Um, and that's all I have. I did have one update, though, from my liaison in Aspen. So just a small grant, uh, the Four One Housing, uh, Trust, uh, completed their final review for the small grants process, so. So just a small grant, uh, the Fortland Housing, uh, Trust, uh, completed their final review for the small grants process, so folks should be receiving letters by the end of, um, December.
Great.
Yeah.
If there's nothing else, we'll have a full of minutes.
We'll just have the minutes for the select board meeting, now, number six, two thousand twenty-two.
Second by Ms. Curran, further discussion, seeing none, all in favor? Aye, it is unanimous. So we are gonna adjourn, adjourn inside documents, but we are gonna be going into executive session and not returning back to an open meeting. Uh, the chair of players, that the select board moving to executive session pursuant to purpose three of the open meeting law to discuss strategies with respect to litigation. And I declare that open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the select board in connection with this matter. The board will not be convened in open session, and the matter is the asset allocation bylaw article. Can I have a motion?
Move that the select board going to executive session pursuant to purpose three of the open meeting law to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, and I declare that an open meeting, they have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the select board in connection with this matter, the board will not reconvene in open session. Second.
Second by Ms. Cantfield. First, we have to have a little holdup, right?
Not for this, only, uh, what we can do, Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Ms. Cantfield?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Everyone have a Merry Christmas.